We are now live.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending today's meeting in the Santa Rosa City School Board. Today is Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. We will open this meeting. And we will start our meeting with a territorial land acknowledgement. Joining us this evening is Dean Hoglen, Community Outreach Specialist for the Antis and Uncles Program at Sonoma County Indian Health. We could bring Mr. Hoglen over. Here he is. Hello, Mr. Hoglen. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoglen is of Coast Miwok, Pomo, Yuki, and Wailaki ancestry, and was born and raised in Santa Rosa. We're honored to have you join us this evening. I'm going to turn it over to you for the acknowledgement.
Yahweh, in our language, kamolus, we say, "Thank you." Again, chinta eh, open toes, ai. And so I said, "Hello, relatives. How are you?" And it's my honor and my privilege, I'm humbled to be with you all. Again, as a traditional person, you know, I have a lot of gratitude today to acknowledge, you know, a protocol that is, you know, always traditionally been a part of how we present ourselves and giving thanks for the land on which we live on and that my ancestors have stewarded for since time immemorial. This beginning of time. And so it's my honor to acknowledge again this beautiful place we all call home. You know, the land of the southern Pomo, my ancestors, Coast Miwok, my ancestors, and Wapo relatives also. And so I just really show appreciation again for allowing me to be with you. And what this speaks to is, you know, with that acknowledgement, is a continuum to give voice to and truth to who we are as indigenous people of this land. And that we're still here, and we've always been here, and we will continue to be here. And we're thankful that, you know, our culture has sustained us. So again, kimasa, hileka, susu, mihik, in my native language, I said, "Thank you." It's good to be with all of you in this space this evening. And I appreciate, you know, this opportunity again. And I just ask for continued blessings and guidance for each one of you and ask for protection for each one of you as you move forward, for you and your families, for your homes. And again, that's why we have these intentions as indigenous people. It's not just for our people, but for all people that we live, you know, as human relatives, that we be a good relative and that we walk with integrity. We walk with dignity. And that this is a historical time for us, our people. And so again, I can never say it enough. Thank you, Yahweh, kamolus. Thank you for this opportunity. And again, I hope that you all have a good meeting and appreciate all the good work you do for our families, for our students, and blessings to each and every one of you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And we will continue to honor the past and the present for the future of this land and for our school community. So with respect and gratitude, thank you so much, Mr. Hoglen. All right, we'll move on to agenda item C2. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could rise and unmute your microphones for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, as February Black History Month comes to an end, I want to ground us this evening on a significant and impactful legacy at the root of nonviolent youth movements that have become entrenched in American activism and the fight for just causes. On February 1st, 1964, African-American students from North Carolina Agricultural and Technical College sat down at the lunch counter at a Woolworth's diner in downtown Greensboro. At that time in North Carolina, it was state law to deny lunch counter dining service for anyone but whites. So defying the law, the four young men refused to give up their seats. And these students would later become known as the Greensboro Four. The students stayed at the lunch counter until the store closed. And the following day, they returned and were joined by three white female students from the Women's College at the University of North Carolina. A few days later, by February 5th, over 300 students had joined the protest paralyzing the lunch counter and other local businesses in Greensboro. The lunch counter sit-in continued through the month of February, culminating on this date, February 23rd, 62 years ago today, when a group of Wake Forest students joined the protest. And the Wake Forest students, they had been very busy working with other students at colleges throughout the South, creating solidarity chapters. So similar sit-in movements then spread to college towns throughout the United States as young black and white people joined in various forms of peaceful protest against segregation in restaurants, libraries, beaches, hotels, and other establishments. So to ground us today, I would like us to reflect on Black History Month as it's coming to an end, the Greensboro Four, and the power of youth movements, of students standing up for what they believe in, forcing society to hear and see young people for who they are and to appreciate their ability to change the course of history. So the Greensboro Four. And there you have it, Professor Sheffield's history lesson for the week. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item C3, Report of Actions Taken in Closed Session. There were no actions to report. C4 Items Considered in Closed Session for Actions in Open Session. There were none. C5 Statements of Abstention. Are there statements of abstention tonight? Board members. Seeing none, moving on. Agenda item C6, Adjustments to the Agenda. Are there requests for adjustments to this agenda tonight? All right. Can we go to the public for adjustments to consent items, the F section?
Thank you. If there are members of the public who would like to comment on any items at the end of the agenda in the F section, now is the time to state your intention to comment so that item can be pulled for a comment later in the meeting. This is toward the end of the meeting. So anyone in the public who'd like to comment on an F consent item toward the end of the meeting, please raise your hand now. There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you. All right, no hands raised. We are moving on to C7, Special Presentation for Students of the Month and Certified Classified Employees of the Month. We have presentations tonight to honor our students for their academic achievements, their character, and their praiseworthy criteria. We will also be honoring certified and classified employees for their outstanding dedication service. Joining us for these presentations, we have Principals Coscarelli, Jordan, and Luke. And we're bringing them over. Hello, Brad. Let's see, we have everybody here. All right, I see Moni. Yes, hello. All right, well, we are going to start with Hidden Valley. So we're going to start with you, Principal Coscarelli.
Okay. If I have Kira Deneen available, I would love to have her present, and I will read this. So it is a pleasure to present Kira Deneen as Hidden Valley Elementary School's honoree for the Santa Rosa City Schools Elementary Student of the Month. The choice comes as no surprise to all the teachers who have enjoyed having Kira in their classrooms over the past seven years. There she is. Joy Meacham, Kira's kindergarten teacher, has fond memories of Kira's time in her class. Mrs. Meacham recalls that she was well behaved, kind, and loved to read. She remembers that Kira was always ready to lend a hand and participated in all lessons and activities. Other teachers recall her as kind, dependable, inquisitive, thoughtful, and diligent, the very definition of an excellent student and a person of integrity. Now in sixth grade, Kira is a calm presence in the classroom. She is a deep thinker and consistently turns in excellent work that builds upon concepts taught in class. Mrs. Wood has been impressed with her sophisticated writing skills and her ability to analyze literature. Quote, "She expresses her ideas in a way that is well beyond her years." Quote, her teacher says, "Kira is well behaved and respectful, but the thing that Mrs. Wood admires most about her is the way she treats others. She is one of the kindest students her teachers have ever had. She treats her fellow students with respect and compassion and is respected in return. Kira is a person one can trust to do the right thing to the best of her ability in any situation. We look forward to the final months of sixth grade with this awesome and wonderful student before bidding her farewell as she moves on to middle school. With such a positive and responsible outlook and attitude, we at Hidden Valley know that Kira will succeed at whatever she decides to do in life. Hidden Valley School is proud to honor Kira Deneen as its Santa Rosa City Schools Elementary Student of the Month for February 2022." Congratulations.
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 And I think her whole family is there with her, so. Congratulations, Devon.
Congratulations. All right, let you continue, Brad.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Next, I have Mrs. Jill Jackson for Certified Employee of the Month. And if Ms. Jackson is available, and I'll start. It is our pleasure tonight to introduce Mrs. Jill Jackson as the Hidden Valley Elementary School Teacher of the Month. There she is. Mrs. Jackson is a second-grade teacher and has worked at Hidden Valley for the last 24 years. Mrs. Jackson exemplifies what it means to be an amazing teacher. She is kind, caring, and strives every day to be the best teacher she can be. She builds strong relationships with her students and their families. She teaches social, emotional, and academic learning in her class, focusing on the whole child. Mrs. Jackson creates an environment in her classroom where students feel safe and welcome. Her students are engaged, focused, and have fun while learning. Mrs. Jackson is known as an excellent communicator with students, colleagues, and parents. And she will often bring in home-baked items for our staff and students. She is also a student of Santa Rosa City Schools, having gone to Slater Middle School and Montgomery High School. She is a respected and valued member of our Hidden Valley Elementary Family and an asset to the Santa Rosa City Schools District. She can and does make a daily difference in the lives of her students. Once again, it is our pleasure to present Mrs. Jackson with the Santa Rosa City Schools Award for Teacher of the Month for Hidden Valley Elementary School. Congratulations.
Hey, thank you, Jill. 24 years, thank you.
Jill, it's Lori. Congratulations.
Very happy with you, for you.
Thank you, Jill. And if we have Mrs. Lisa Phillips, I'll have her step forward over Zoom. It is our great pleasure this evening to announce this month's Santa Rosa City Schools Classified Employee of the Month Award to Mrs. Lisa Phillips, Hidden Valley Elementary School. Mrs. Phillips serves as the Health Office Technician at Hidden Valley Elementary. As such, she has taken her role to new heights for our school and district. During the last three school years of our current pandemic, Mrs. Phillips has organized and coordinated our safety protocols on campus, moved the entire health office into a new room, set up the isolation tent, and has been instrumental with students and parents regarding communication about COVID. She maintains a comprehensive list of COVID information for our district and for the Sonoma County Health Department. Mrs. Phillips has taken on the additional responsibilities of clearing all volunteers for Hidden Valley. This includes making sure all volunteers have TB, mandated reporter trainings, and cleared fingerprints. She maintains a list of our cleared volunteers for our teachers. Along with being our health technician, Mrs. Phillips also works in our daycare program. There she is. She spends afternoons in our daycare where she works with 60 to 70 students daily. For all this and more, it is our pleasure to bestow Mrs. Lisa Phillips with the Award for Classified Employee of the Month for Hidden Valley Elementary School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lisa. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to Ridgeway. We have Principal Jordan. Hello, Valerie. I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening. So if we have Travis Summers, if he's available, come on over.
On his way.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to start. I'm sure he'll show up shortly. So Travis Summers is 11th grader that fell victim to COVID-19 distance learning model that just didn't work for him. He saw himself as an average student until distance learning. This is how he became a soaring blue jay at Ridgeway High School. Travis admits mornings are not his favorite. However, something clicked for him, and one of his biggest achievements and his most proud of is his perfect attendance here at Ridgeway. That's a huge accomplishment, so kudos there, Travis. Travis has taken full advantage of all the clubs here at Ridgeway. We offer him during lunchtime. Wednesday, so you'll find him at Tea and Talk, the book club, because he loves to read. And then Thursday, you'll find him at the Science Club doing some labs. And Friday, he'll be out there whooping it up with his peers at Music Club. Although Travis is reserved, and you would think reserved, he is a karaoke type of guy. So he was out there singing in the quads. I'm so proud of him. Travis has received Step 3 Plus, every evaluation, and his teachers just rave about him and his ability for hard work. He attends regularly, and he's sweet, and he has a quiet disposition. He is a go-getter. He has earned 27 credits first semester or first quarter and 23.5 credits second quarter for a total of 50.5 credits this fall semester. Travis, I want you to hear that your teachers at Ridgeway are so very proud of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Travis. I'm not a morning person either.
Right.
Nice word.
You can relate. Can I next bring over David Valencia Mendoza, please?
He's on his way.
Thank you. So Mr. David Valencia is a ray of sunshine. Every morning, David greets the office staff and his administrators. David was excited to have students back returning. He started this school year hitting the ground running. He feels comfortable in his leadership role as a day custodian. He is an excellent communicator. He keeps his administrators informed of necessary issues and is a very hard worker. He takes great pride in his work and his school. David's first year at Ridgeway was in 2020, and already he had made a name for himself. David took the time during COVID without the presence of students to collaborate with others to beautify the Ridgeway campus. This extra effort will give our students a sense of pride in their school community, Mr. Valencia said. David has completed painting the exterior of the school, beautifying the campus with new landscape, cleaned restrooms thoroughly, and deep cleaned floors and carpets. David is a welcome addition to Ridgeway and is a great team player. David is willing to support others in any capacity for the greater good of the school community. In fact, every Wednesday, you will find David in the front of the school greeting and connecting with our Ridgeway families as he loads groceries into their car. Mr. Valencia is a valuable asset to the Ridgeway community, and we appreciate him. Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Congratulations.
Thank you, David.
School, see? Look at this.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so our Certificate Employee of the Month is Caitlin Cameron.
He's on her way.
Thank you. All right, Caitlin Cameron is a standout teacher at Ridgeway Continuation High School. Ms. Cameron transitioned from elementary position to our teaching community for the most at-risk student body seemingly and seamlessly. In a very short time, less than four years, Ms. Cameron has been at Ridgeway. She has initiated opportunities for students, created professional development for her colleagues, and solicited donations to her projects from the community and has taken on advisory position for our teen parents. Caitlin is a biology teacher, has extended learning opportunities outside the classroom for her students. Ms. Cameron knows connection before content is imperative. Her demeanor is friendly, and she oozes confidence in her students, and they feel it. She will be developing with her students a native garden on-site this year. Caitlin is not one to shy away from reaching out to the community to ask for what her students may need. Caitlin has brought also the FARM's Leadership Program to Ridgeway High School. This program recruits and trains high school students for college and career opportunities in agriculture and environmental studies. Ms. Cameron has also taken her students on field trips to bring them into the beautiful forests and out to the Sonoma County agriculture communities. Caitlin is a doer. As our staff pondered about too many plastic bottles, Caitlin quietly wrote a grant seeking funds for water filters and filter pitchers teachers could use in their classrooms to get students to drink the faucet water, as they sarcastically called it, right? Caitlin created a how-to packet for her colleagues to write a grant and turn them on to other sites to apply for special items for projects. She is engaging, smart, caring, collaborative, and full of resourcefulness. Plus, she's fun. Caitlin Cameron is a gem at Ridgeway and we are very lucky to have her indeed. A friend and collaborator to teachers, a constant presence of encouragement and good teaching skills for her students, she is an invaluable member of Ridgeway family, and we are so proud of her. Thank you, Caitlin.
Congratulations, Caitlin.
Congratulations.
Great to meet you. Great, Caitlin.
Good job, Caitlin. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Jordan. All right. Last but not least, we will move on to Creo. We have Principal Luke.
Hello, everyone. Those were heartwarming. Thank you. So it is Maria Creo High School's honor to present a first student, Leo Herbman. And if he's available, there he is. I see he's signed on. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, so Leo Hirstman is a senior at Maria Creo High School. He is well-respected by his peers, is an advocate for the student body, and a trustworthy journalist for the Puma Prentza. He's a genuine seeker of truth and believes people should be well-informed when there are circumstances that have the potential to impact their well-being. Leo was not always comfortable with communicating with others, whether it was in a verbal or written format. When asked about his accomplishments, he shares that he's very proud of his growth in the area of overcoming obsessive-compulsive disorder and learning how to be communicative, flexible, and work with people. From fifth grade through most of middle school, he says he kept to himself. It was the journalism class at Maria Creo that challenged him to think outside the box and to talk to people. As Leo began to develop relationships, he soon became aware of the patience and flexibility required when getting people to open up about their circumstances, especially when working with teens and deadlines. We can relate, Leo. And Leo soon realized he enjoyed the liberty to choose his own stories. The power outages were the catalyst to Leo demonstrating his passion for journalism. He realized that if he put in the time to do the research, he could tell the why behind the circumstances and help raise awareness. According to Leo's journalism advisor, Mr. James Hart, journalism teacher, he could tell Leo was a natural in his first year of journalism. He immediately tackled stories that made other students and staff raise their eyebrows in surprise, such as well-researched expose of the connection between former Governor Brown's campaign for top office and tax enforcement at the Public Utility Commission, complete with an interview of a California State Senator. Leo is ultimately interested in telling national stories, to be that voice that people will listen to and trust. Lastly, Mr. Hart, Leo's journalism teacher, writes, "He will be an invaluable citizen of our democracy, a supremely capable critical thinker with a heart, a person that cares more about people knowing the truth than he does about almost anything else. We expect you to do great things, Leo. Congratulations. We are oh so proud of you."
Congratulations, Leo.
What an honor, Leo.
Your Pulitzer awardee.
All right, thank you, Leo. Next, we have Classified Staff of the Month would be Lisa Greenstein, if she's available.
Yes.
There she is. I see her. Okay. Lisa Greenstein has been a Puma for over 20 years. As a parent of three children, two of her three graduated from Maria Creo High School. Lisa joined the staff in 2013, first as an attendance tech, and later moved into the position of Office Manager Administrative Assistant, where she has served for the past seven years and has been a wingperson for several principals. In addition to Lisa's impeccable work ethic and professionalism, she brings a wealth of institutional knowledge and skills. Anyone who's had the pleasure of working with her knows her to be calm, detail-oriented, dedicated to her work, and assistance thinker. Like her colleagues, Lisa was seen during the majority of distance learning working on-site, supporting the needs of students, staff, and families. She's truly dedicated to the success of Maria Creo High School. She's well-versed in our SIPSA and can always be counted on to keep our goals and our stakeholders at the center of decisions. Lisa attends all advisory committee meetings and on occasion, schoolsite council meetings. When asked what she loves about working at Maria Creo High School, she shared that Maria Creo High School is a very fun place to work with engaging students and excellent staff. Lastly, I'm grateful to work closely with Lisa on a daily basis. She was the first person to greet me on this journey of principalship in Puma land. She met me on a beautiful Sunday morning to give me a great big hug at the doors of the admin building and a tour. She has continued to be a source of support, a wonderful thought partner, protector of my time, and just a wonderfully gentle but direct spirit. Thank you for this space to honor this Lisa Greenstein.
Congratulations, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, for all you do.
All right, and last but not least, our Certified Personnel of the Year is Ms. Natasha Deacon. And if she's available, if you could please advance her forward. I found her. She was under her last name, and she's on her way over. Okay. There you are. Okay, Ms. Natasha Deacons has been a part of the Puma community for over 23 years. And while serving primarily as an English teacher, Ms. Deacons has truly demonstrated what it means to be an active learner as she has taken on many different assignments for the greater good of the school during her tenure. For example, she's been the loss accreditation coordinator and still is for the past three years and is also a work-based learning teacher on special assignment. You can often find her at school events, supporting student athletes, musicians, dancers, drama students, and leadership students. Ms. Deacons demonstrates the perfect balance of connection and care for her students in addition to high academic performance expectations. Students trust her. They like that she is honest and believes in them. In 2015, for a short time- In 2015, for a short time, Ms. Deacons took a position at the Sonoma County Office of Education. There, Ms. Deacons perfected her coaching skills and worked with many teachers and administrators across Sonoma County, assisting them with integrating for curriculum and career readiness skills. Since her return to Maria Corio High School, she's generously assisted the administration to improve teaching and learning. She is organized, a multitasker, networked, and a wonderful pedagogical coach with current technological skills. What I appreciate about Ms. Deacons is that she's not afraid to be what Marianne Williamson refers to as brilliant, gorgeous, talented, and fabulous. She is courageous with infectious attention to detail and excellence. She inspires, liberates others, and is always pushing those who will allow it to grow. It is an honor and privilege to have her as a team member. Congratulations, Ms. Deacons. You deserve this recognition. So much more. Walk in it and own it. Thank you, Ms. Deacons.
Congratulations.
Natasha, thank you. What a great write-up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Luke.
All right. That was fun. Good night.
Thanks again. Congratulations to all of our students and staff. We are moving on to Agenda Item C8, School Site Parent Organization Updates. We have representatives from Hidden Valley and Maria Corio, if we could bring them over.
So first up, I'm bringing over the Hidden Valley Representative, Ms. Anne Rice.
Great.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome, Ms. Rice.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Rice and I'm the mother of twins in third grade at Hidden Valley Elementary. I'm the current president of the PFO and I consider myself very lucky to be part of this great community. It really feels like a family. Our main responsibility, of course, is to raise money for our school. We have several events and programs throughout the year dedicated to that end. Two of our most successful events are our Walkathon that we aptly call the Hawkathon since we're the Hidden Valley Hawks. And we we hold that in the fall. And then our second large event is our Dinner Dance Auction that's held in the spring. We also have ongoing programs such as Family Giving, where instead of having numerous cookie candy or wrapper wrapping paper fundraisers, we ask that families make like a one-time donation for per child for the families that are able to. We also have a monthly dine and donate evening, a fall and a spring book fair, and some similar earning some smaller earnings that we make through Amazon Smile and Box Tops. We also have a very successful food pantry program for our families in need. Families receive a monthly food box and this past holiday season, we implemented a Christmas giving tree to help families with holiday gifts for their kids. This is one of the programs that I'm most proud of and I want to say a million thanks to Missy Kelleher and Mr. Coscarelli for making this such a successful program. These events, of course, require a lot of hours and manpower and I'm truly grateful to our PFO Board and event chairs as well as the parent volunteers who work so hard to make these events possible. Our Hawkathon Chair put in over 120 hours alone for the event and she had a team of 10 people who all pitched in as well to prepare for the day. Our auction chair has worked already 25-plus hours requesting donations, picking up donations, securing venues, arranging for entertainment, food and drink, and there's still a lot to do before the main event on April 30th. We couldn't do it without the support of this amazing community. Our Hidden Valley families go above and beyond to help support the needs of our school. The funds we work so tirelessly for include $40 per student for classroom supplies, $10 a student for field trips, our Art Dosen Program, which brings back art in the classroom, which the teachers and students both love and greatly appreciate. I know mine do. Learning programs such as IXL and Happy Numbers, which we share with the Share the Cost School Site Council, various technologies in the classroom, the water hydration system that we put in at school, and monthly landscaping for the campus. One thing our school community is looking very forward to is a new playground. Our PFO has been raising funds for this much-needed new play structure and we will be contributing half of the overall cost. The existing playground is old, has wood chips, which don't allow children in leg braces or wheelchairs to easily play or play at all. Our proposed new playground will have rubberized flooring and includes equipment for all-inclusive play. This is something we've been working hard for over the past two-plus years for and we would like to thank the district, specifically Eric Oden, Rick Edson, and Superintendent Anna Trenell for their assistance in moving this project forward. In fact, the playground is on the agenda tonight for board approval, so we thank you for that. I'm truly grateful to our school principal, Mr. Coscarelli, our office manager and auction chair, Kristen Callgrove, all our amazing teachers such as Ms. Jackson, who was honored earlier tonight, and the entire school staff. When I told my daughter Ms. Jackson was being honored, she was her teacher last year. She said she's the best teacher mom. But I've had that experience all throughout my my kids' years so far. We've had nothing but great teachers and nothing but an amazing experience. In fact, my kids are only in third grade, but I'm already dreading the day they have to leave Hidden Valley. Thank you for your time to speak about our wonderful school and PFO.
Thank you so much, Anne. Do we have a representative from Maria Corio, Carrie Stewart-Divant?
Yes, I'm bringing her over now.
Welcome, Carrie. Are you with us, Carrie? We have you on mute. Here we go. Hello.
There you go. Hello. Sorry about that. So my name is Carrie Sturdeman. I'm the donor coordinator for the Maria Corio High School Parent Association. I'll be reading a statement prepared by our president, Teresa Jepson, who was unable to attend the meeting tonight. It's been a couple of years since we have provided an update to the board from from parents at Maria Corio High School. Our school year began with welcoming our new principal, Monique Luke, to the Puma community. Principal Luke has been an advocate for parent voices since her arrival on our campus and we are so appreciative of her willingness to listen. We are thankful students are back to in-person learning this year and are grateful for the efforts of teachers, staff, and administration both onsite and at the district level for providing adequate coverage in classrooms to keep our schools open during the most recent COVID uptick. We are thankful our community was able to come together to cheer on our student athletes at sporting events and student performers and student performers at outdoor productions this past fall. Another highlight for our community was the Homecoming Dance, which students purchased a record number of tickets. You may recall our Homecoming Weekend was sadly accompanied by a possible security threat. Our entire community was incredibly grateful for the district providing a Santa Rosa Police Department presence that evening as well as the presence of several district administrators at our football game Friday evening. For additional peace of mind, our Parent Association funded a private security team for the Homecoming Dance. Our community continues to focus on our graduate profile. Puma stands for Powerful Producer, Universal Citizen, Masterful Communicator, and Active Learners. Every year, we focus on a different attribute, which means by the end of their high school career, students have had exposure to each area. This profile was created several years ago in an effort to help our students better connect their high school education to tangible, real-world skills. One of the ways the Parent Association has partnered with the school to implement this profile was by helping purchase the Project Wayfinder curriculum for use by our students for the past three years. We are thrilled the district has adopted the curriculum to be used in our Santa Rosa Middle and High Schools, so all students in our community can benefit from the self-exploration and focus it provides. Campus beautification has been an ongoing effort in our community as well. With students back at school, we plan to hold our annual Spring Mulch Madness event to help spruce up the campus again this year, which positively impacts student pride. In addition, we are already prepping for upcoming WASC visit this fall. As you are all aware, this process is a heavy lift for every school. The challenges we face as a community are not shared by our school alone. As parents, we see more and more expectations placed on the teachers, staff, and administration who show up each day for our students. Many in our community sorely miss having the presence of a school resource officer on our campus. The presence of these officers was of comfort to many students and their parents as well as the aforementioned teachers, staff, and administration. I urge you to find a way to reinstate this program for the safety and well-being of our students. I would also urge the district to find a way to provide more mental health services on our campuses for students and for staff who are feeling overwhelmed or burdened. Our students need those instructing them and seeing to their well-being while they're on our campus to be in the best frame of mind they can be. Unfortunately, many of the programs our Parent Association has provided over the years are in jeopardy of being defunded as fundraising efforts have been severely hampered, in part due to fundraising burnout due to local fires as well as the inability to hold large gatherings and a sense of detachment from our school community due to the pandemic. We are hopeful that as we continue to return to pre-pandemic activities that are fundraising will also return to previous levels. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Carrie. All right. We are moving on our agenda, Agenda Item C9, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. This time, we open up for public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you. If there are any members of the public, we'd like to start with students. If there are students who'd like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, this is the time to do it. Please raise your hand. And we will open it to anyone at this time, so please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. And President Sheffield, what is the time limit for the comments?
Two minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. So two-minute time limit. We'll have a timer to help you with that. And our first comment is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for again allowing us to advise them to communicate with you guys. In the idea of Black History Month, as Mr. Sheffield has went ahead and allowed to share his thoughts on that, I want to take a moment to talk about what Malcolm X told us about sitting in places and expecting to get results. I've been told that basically when I sit in, I am intimidating and I'm someone that they don't want to sit into meetings. The reality is, is that I'm tired of sitting in and seeing nothing happen. It's concerning to me that we have a health official who's made the newspaper currently and we're taking guidance from an individual who alleges to care about the concerns of ourselves and one another. And what she does for the community is deal with our safety for public health. But she was arrested for a DUI, not once but twice. It's concerning that we're taking health advice from someone who can't do the most common common of courtesies, which is don't be inebriated while being on the road. If you are faithful in just a little bit, you're faithful in Allah. There's scripture to support that if you're into religion. This person cannot be trusted in the least amount to talk about anyone's health and her concern for us. This is not my opinion. This is a fact based upon her actions in the community. We continue to put people through all these mandates based off people's ideas of what's okay. Please consider what you're doing. Take the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Caitlin Azderian.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm a parent of a child in the exceptionally wonderful Santa Rosa City Schools Magnet School Learning House. And what I'd like to do is to advocate for Learning House to be represented as a magnet school on the Santa Rosa City Schools website. Currently, the school is incorporated into the list of elementary schools. However, charter schools have a separate link. And I strongly feel that in order to bring more clarity and visibility to Learning House for potential families who are looking for a unique project-based learning school option, it really should be listed under a separate category as a magnet school, similar to how charter schools are presented on the site. I appreciate your review and your consideration for this suggestion and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Next is Gabby Pay.
Hello, board members. I wanted to take the time to thank you all individually, but we just have two minutes, so I gotta get to it. So thank you all for being here. This is not the easiest time to do this and I know you're all doing wonderful things for our school district. I just want to tell you as a parent, all I want is for my children to be able to play outside unmasked and without worry. I just want them to be kids. They have never my kids at least have never had a regular school year between fires and the social distance and the being able to do Zoom at home. So I just wanted you guys to know where I'm coming from. I would wait this out, but on the 28th, the governor said they were going to make an announcement and I listened to it and they said, maybe if we get around to it, if the data looks good, media asked them what the merits were. They didn't have an answer. They gave the runaround again. And so that worries me and that's why I'm here today. And the other thing is that in California in November 2021, so just this last November, let them breathe as to Governor Newsom and the judge said that the CDPH can only make it a recommendation. They can't make it a mandate. And unfortunately, they put all of the liability on the school districts. I want to make it clear that the judge also said that the laws are laws and mandates are requests and requirements are also requests. You can say no and be brave, just like Rose Park. Unless there's a California law that's broken and someone to enforce it, these mandates are just requests. And the CDPH said that they did not follow the avenues to make masking for children law. And the judge Freeland, you know, said that again in in the case, it's California case law, so please look at that. Also, too, if children were to show up without their masks, there's all these laws to protect children. Sorry, I don't know how much time I have. But I'll be sure to email you guys so you can take a look at this because I would hate for our school district to get sued. Really need that money for other things. All peoples have the right to participate fully in the educational process, free from discrimination and harassment. That's a code 201. There's also the school can be liable for up to $25,000 per incident at Civil Code 52.1. So these are just some examples of, you know, of our student rights. So.
Ms. Pay, your time ran out just a little bit ago. Thank you for your comment and thank you for emailing. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is John Smith.
Hello, board. Thank you for letting me speak. Tonight, I asked the board trustees individually and collectively to ask for the resignation of Sonoma County Public Health Officer, Dr. Sandari Mays. As has been reported, Dr. Mays was arrested in December 2020, one of the deadliest months in California history for drunken driving in which he almost caused a vehicle collision, failed field sobriety tests, and had blood alcohol content of nearly twice the legal limit. This was her second offense for which she was given an uncommon amount of leniency. She withheld this information for over 14 months, which was her legal right, but extremely unethical. What the board may not be aware of is she was at the time breaking a state public health stay-at-home order. This is unacceptable conduct for the position that she held and extremely disrespectful to SRCS staff and families who have had an extreme burden placed upon them for over two years. Please consider the ideals and responsibilities of your posts when considering this request. The SRCS district relies upon you to be faithful community leaders. Please don't condone drunken driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute time limit, is Deanna Oliveris.
Hi, Superintendent and Board. I, you all know me and I usually have a lot of stuff to say. I was gonna go off on a tangent about Mace, but there's already a few speakers that said exactly what I was thinking, so I'm not gonna bore you with that. So I'm not gonna bore you with that. I do have two other things to mention. One is that it's, it's really frustrating that month after month, I see you all just make decisions about our children, and you, you communicate with the, the teachers' union and the classified, and the classified union and the county health officials and the state guidelines and CDC. But there has been no outreach to your stakeholders and your families in regards to, like, even things like masking. It's, it's just really frustrating that we have, as parents, we have to wait around to see what the teachers' unions are gonna demand when it comes to their MOUs and masking our children. And just with like, I'll talk later upon the, the Zoom conferencing you guys are gonna probably vote on to not have in-person Zooms again. Again, you haven't asked for stakeholders. You haven't asked families how they felt. You keep saying you're gonna ask us. You haven't asked us. There's been no surveys. You don't come to the schools and ask us. You don't go to parent meetings. Ms. Trinell went to a parent meeting for 20 minutes last month with her camera off. I don't know if she was there or not there. I showed up to hopefully see if she actually was gonna interact with us. She did not. It's very alarming. And other thing I would like to say is, there's been gun scares at campuses that district you guys knew about, at 8:00 AM, principals knew about, parents did not know about. And we need to get the school resource officers back on campus. Stop pushing the political agenda. It's not about George Floyd. We need our resource officers back.
Thank you. Next is Natalie Hoyt, two-minute time limit, public comment on a non-agenda item.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. I would just like to call in with my concerns tonight about unsafe conditions on our campus. A parent at Cesar Chavez Language Academy, and we've had just constant fights and vandalism. It's just not a safe place for our students. Our campus supervisor position has been vacant all year. You're only offering $15 an hour, which and people can go work at Chipotle for $16 an hour. I don't see that ever being filled. So I'm not sure what you are gonna do, but we do something to get the position filled. We can't have the lack of supervision that we have because it's just not safe for our students. So if you're going to students first, you need to get people in those positions and actually care about student safety on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sheila Walker.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Trinell. I also will echo the comments made about student safety on campuses. You will be receiving a, a letter this week from the Rincon Valley Middle School parents, not just from me, but from a group of parents. And it's similar to the previous speaker from CCLA. Our campus is quite large with shracks also adjacent to the middle school. We've also had campus supervisor, I think, vacant, I think, all, all of this year. And I think we're one of the larger schools as a middle school on our own. And then, of course, we have the added fifth and sixth graders on our campus. So you will be getting a letter from a good handful of us from our school this week. And we are also requesting as a group that the board bring back the SROs and let us know what the formula is per, when the, per campus size of adults to student ratio for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Cecil. Comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute limit, please.
Hello, good evening. I'm both a teacher at Piner High School as well as a parent of two high school-aged students in the district. And I just, I really enjoyed hearing the initial comments and about the great things that teachers are doing. And I think that demonstrates that the students possess a desire and innate ability to heal. And I think that's fabulous, the work that people are doing to further that for them. I do come with a concern, however. A few days ago, there was an article, the Press Democrat stating that Sonoma County Schools Superintendent Seek Relief From COVID-19 Impacts. And the truth of the matter is, is that there is not enough resources on campus to keep students safe. And I'm especially concerned with the inability of students to come to campus and leave campus on super, with supervision. There really needs to be people at points of entry and exit to ensure that there's safety for the students. We have seen multiple incidences where gangs of students, not saying that they're gangs, but like groups of students are having physical confrontations in unwashed areas. And I don't think that's an issue with Piner. I think that that's evident throughout the high school system from my talks with other parents and other teachers. And so I'm gonna ask you to invest in the healing of our kids by providing safety and take some of the burden off of our administrators who are doing everything that they can to manage the day-to-day activities of our school campuses. I'm urging you to increase the number of adults present, to pay campus supervisors a real living wage in Sonoma County, and to reinstate the SRO or to replace that with another adult that's trained in some sort of trauma-informed care. Thank you so much for hearing my, my comments.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised for this item.
Great. Thank you so much. And thanks to all who spoke with their issues and concerns. I'm looking at the time. It's seven o'clock. I'm not sure if we need to pause for interpreter switch. How are our interpreters doing?
President Sheffield, they're both in the channel this evening, so no switches are necessary.
Great. All right. Well, then we are going to move on to our D reports. D1, California School Employee Association Report. Do we have President Mary Lehman or Representative from CSCA?
If there is a CSCA representative present, could you please raise your hand at this time? I do see Ms. Afonso. Should I go ahead and bring her over?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. President Sheffield, they've been brought over, but it appears they may be away from their computer if we.
Okay, and that's fine. And we don't really need to port her on the spot if, if she was not the representative tonight, but it is tuning in. Let's see if we have President Howell for SRTA to come over.
Yeah, she is on her way over.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. President Sheffield and Superintendent Trinell and members of the board. Good to see you. I was thinking about my report this evening, and I was playing, I was sharing my Wordle with my family as we do on our group chat. And I thought, well, you know, this school year is a lot like a game of Wordle. So I'm now gonna subject you to, in a very tortured and extended metaphor. But you know, if we start, you know, you know, you start Wordle, if you've played, you start with your random but pretty strategic word. You try to balance your vowels and your consonants and, and you know, you get a pattern of yellows and greens, and you're trying to get to the answer, right? So you get six chances, which is more than life usually gives you. But let's start with some green tiles celebrating the amazing people that we saw earlier in the meeting. Our students are certificated and our classified staff, all of them, and thanking them so much for their contributions to our school district, to our schools. So that's definitely a green tile. We have the green tiles of Women's History Month and art appreciation. Those are definitely got some green going on. Our substitute situation is very thankfully a yellow tile today. We don't know where it might go, but you know, we got pretty good numbers in terms of classified substitute fulfillment rates in the single digits, which is kind of a record for the last couple of months. So thanks to Tammy Afonso for figuring that out, and also thank you to every substitute that has ever worked for Santa Rosa City Schools, because we appreciate you. The teachers are definitely appreciating the substitutes. The budget information that we're gonna look at tonight, it's a yellow tile. Still needs to be moved around a little bit, but good news there. For that, I want to say thank you to the Budget Advisory Committee for the time they've spent on that. And also, you know, I've said it before, and, and it is a year later, but thanks to this board and our superintendent for really taking that sort of fiscal risk that was taken in giving the salary increases to not just SRTA but to CSCA as we continue to try to make Santa Rosa City Schools a destination. And, you know, let's get qualified teachers. Let's get qualified support staff in here. So it's recognized that, you know, the decisions that you've made as board to forward these pay increases and healthcare benefits have definitely, you know, it's a little bit of a financial risk. So we thank you for that. If we are, as I believe, agree this a little bit more, the LCAP is a little bit of a black tile. A lot of zeros in terms of expenditures and you know, not a lot of communication, certainly not with SRTA about revisions for upcoming, you know, reviewing the annual LCAP. So SRTA is looking forward to our invitation to collaborate on the LCAP. And then, of course, uh, the big black tile in the room is the, what's gonna go on with masking, right? We don't know what the recommendations and the mandates are gonna be. We're ready to go back to the negotiating table to look at our MOU as things change per our agreement. So hopefully, we'll be able to establish some COVID safety rules, which for what feels like the 10th time. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for indulging me in my, as I said, tortured metaphor. And thank you for all of the considerations that you give to my words each meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell, and really thank you for the Wordle. It is an effective way to, to bring it home to us. So thank you so much. We are going to move on. Actually, you know, maybe we'll just do one more call out for a CSCA representative to bring over, if we could do that, Adina.
If there is a representative from CSCA, President, could you please raise your hand at this time? It does not appear anyone is present. Oh, they just rose their hand. Thank you.
Great.
Oh, we don't have anything to say this evening. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you so much for letting us know. All right. Well, we will bring it back to D3, our superintendent report. Turn it over to you, Superintendent Trinell.
Good evening, or President Sheffield, members of the board, staff and community. Today marks Day 119 for elementary schools and 118 for secondary schools. And so as we continue through the year, I just want to pause and actually take a moment to recognize all of the community partners who support our district and our schools, our individual schools on a regular, daily, weekly, annually basis. We have a new partner who is wanting to support us, and that's Crumble Cookies. So we are looking forward to how we can show some appreciation through Crumble Cookies to our district community as we move forward. And it's such a sweet partnership, if I should say so myself. So thank you again to all of our community partners. As we do this work, we know we can't do this without our community with us. I do want to mention, Ms. Oliveris mentioned a comment about me being at a Rincon Valley meeting, and I appreciate the shout-out and recognition that I was present at the meeting. I have very much enjoyed attending many school site council meetings already, parent organization meetings, and site ELAC meetings. Many of these meetings are happening at the same time and, and on the same days or dates, and I try to get as, I try to get to as many of those as I can. And sometimes that means I'm exiting one meeting in order to join another. So I appreciate the recognition of me being present. It's really important for me, and what our sites know is that my attendance at these meetings is meant to make my presence not an agendized item, but for me to be a listener in those spaces so that I can understand the work that is going on through those meetings. And if I can contribute something to the conversation, I certainly have. I look forward to continuing to attend these meetings, and especially those where our families are present. Just as a reminder, since we've been reminding where days have been a non-school day, I do want to remind everyone that Monday, February 28th, is a school day, since we've had a cadence of Monday holidays. And so we look forward to seeing our students on Monday, February 28th. And for all of you to reference, we have school site reports tonight for Ridgeway, Maria Correa, and Hidden Valley under item I6 of the board agenda tonight. I have some more exciting information to share later on in future board meeting, board agenda items, excuse me. So with that, I will hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. We are going to move on to the D4 and D5 board president and board member reports. I do not have a report tonight. Just move on to D5. If there are board members who have a report wish to share, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we are going to move on. CSBA report. Do we have a CSBA report? All right.
No report.
No report. Thank you. Okay. We are now ready to move on to our E Items, Discussion Action Items. First, we have E1. This is an action item, Public Board Meeting via Teleconference per AB 361. Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you so much, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, community staff, and all guests. So tonight, we bring forward this item as there were questions at the last board meeting about where we're at with the potential of going back to the city. So we bring this item back to ensure that the board has an opportunity to discuss and also potentially continue to vote on continuing virtual board meetings. At this time, the city, the city is working on the plans for lifting some of the current mandates that they are following for social distancing and the limiting of in-person guests into the chambers. We also have the potential of meeting at a location in our own district. I shared previously in a board meeting some of the ways that we could do that in a hybrid fashion, allowing for some in, in-person participation, as well as allowing for individuals to be able to continue to participate virtually. That was affected by the temporary order for a minimization of numbers of people indoors to 50 people initially. That order is now lifted. However, we still do have limitations on the number of in-person groups, I think, to 500. Mr. Mazera could correct me later in our COVID item, but I bring this forward to you tonight, Board, for consideration and potential. But I bring this forward to you tonight, board, for consideration and potential continued voting of keeping board meetings virtual. And I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. All right, board members, any questions? Questions at this time? None. Reminded that this is an action item. We will go to public comment. Do we have members of the public who wish to speak to this agenda item?
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on item E1, please raise your hand. And Deanna Oliveras is our first comment.
Hello. I've spoke about this before and time after time, we've heard board members say that because of Zoom, because when you guys are having the Zoom meetings, we have a really big turnout and upwards of over 100 plus people during the Zoom. And I don't think we should credit that, the convenience of Zoom or technology. We should credit it to pissed off parents, community members and employees. How do we know if this Zoom, this amazing Zoom attendance is because of convenience? Or the fact that there are more concerned than ever, parents about concerned parents about the Santa Rosa City School Board's agenda, which is to infringe on our children's rights. There are so many other districts that are hybrid. There is Rincon Valley School District, Old Adobe and Petaluma, Mark West, Windsor Unified, Cotati-Roner Park, just to name a few. If they are doing it, then why don't we? It's alarming as well to me that we are, we are not in person and you can't stare faces and you can't see our frustration and you can't see us shake hands and hug and touch and and get to know each other and organize. And I think that's very alarming. And I think it's alarming that our kids are masked and our kids are getting pool tested, but a good amount of these board members, they're not even here locally and they don't have kids in our school district. And some of you guys are traveling and you're on airplanes and I see you in restaurants and I've seen you in wineries and I've seen you having a blast. But yet we can't do any in-person or hybrid meetings while our kids are suffering. It doesn't make sense. You guys traveled last month during the height of the pandemic to the San Diego or wherever the hell you guys went for your state board conference. But our kids are masked and you won't let us see each other in person. It's very alarming.
Thank you. Next comment is M. Gabriella Porter.
Hello, I'd just like to advocate for also a hybrid model. Petaluma City Schools is also doing the hybrid model. And I think it's important for us to be able to see each other's faces and to talk after the meeting or before the meeting for you to see our children. If some parents bring it, you know, bring their kids to the board meetings, like that sense of community is really being affected. And it is very frustrating to hear that board members are traveling because that's a conflict of interest, right? Like if you're saying, hey, let's keep this virtual for safety, yet you're traveling and you're in airplanes and you're in restaurants, it really doesn't give like a vote of confidence to the board members ability to make decisions for our kids when you're not here and you're not part of our community. So I really like for you guys to just consider that. And again, like, thank you so much. I know you guys are just doing, you know, the best that you can right now. But we can do better. And I would also like to request that COVID protocols are being reviewed by some counties or in some school districts every board meeting so that we can start taking small steps towards normalcy and that every time you guys understand what the limitations are for our kids. They're not able to see each other's faces, to see each other's, to see their teachers' faces that, you know, the mask does put a barrier between them and someone else. They can see something's wrong when at home or at the playground, they're able to be more relaxed and be more free. And I just want you guys to think about like what the, you know, social, physiological and psychological effects are on our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Mott.
Hello, I hope you can hear me okay. I am calling to advocate for a return to in-person meetings for the board. As our elected officials, I do feel that it would be appropriate for you to hold in-person meetings so that you can see your constituents and be more accountable to the faces of the people whose decisions you are impacting. In the past, when there have been issues that had a lot of community concern, seeing the people in the audience, one time it was the teachers who were advocating for a pay increase and having so many teachers there dressed in matching shirts was very powerful. Another occasion was when we did the A through G and we had large groups of people in person able to advocate for what they were fighting for. I think in a similar manner, having this type of Zoom meeting really does enable a disconnect between the board and your constituents, your stakeholders, primarily the parents. And I think many people have already stated that it's much different to listen from behind a screen where you don't see our faces. You don't see the concern in our eyes, the pain, the tears where, you know, multiple times I've heard parents on here that have been in tears about how upset they are for their children. And I do think that it's time for a return to in-person meetings when so many other things have started to return. I too was slightly concerned when I saw photos of school board members in San Diego in December unmasked on Facebook. I thought that while our students were asked to be masked for six hours a day, that was inappropriate and I would like to see the meetings returned in person. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield. There are no other hands raised for this item.
All right, thank you. And thank you for those who spoke during public comment. Bring it back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion. I see Trustee Flores, your hand is raised.
Thank you, President Sheffield. You know, I just have to second what our constituents have said. As elected officials, I think we have a duty to make sure that we are available to our, you know, to our voters, the people that selected to us to be here. You know, sometimes they'll agree with us, sometimes they won't agree with us, but I like to have that ability to make sure that they can talk to me face to face. I don't necessarily agree with Deanna all the time, right? And but I do have to agree with you tonight, Deanna, that, you know, Ms. Oliveras, that, you know, we do have to switch this to at least a hybrid model to make sure that we are accessible to the people who water us into office. So I just, you know, I voted every single time against this because I think it's it's a disservice, right? The only times that I voted for is because, you know, we had a uptick in our numbers in terms of COVID positive cases. So I think it's important for us to be there in person. And, you know, we asked our teachers to be there with our students, right? And I think it's important for us to just model that sort of expectation that we have of our school employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Other board members? Trustee Fong?
Thank you. President Sheffield and for your comments, also, Trustee Flores. You know, I've been going back and forth on this so much. I believe that as elected officials, we need to be before in person in front of folks. But of course, to use COVID. The upside is that more people get to come. They don't have to disrupt their entire evening. They can be there at home. So there's there's, there's an element of participatory democracy that is really key. So I'd like to pursue the hybrid model. How that is, the other thing that I actually have been reluctant to push our administrative team is is trying to get that done for us because that is a lot of bandwidth. It just is. It's a whole lot of bandwidth to do all of that. And so they have their hands full. As things are calming down, I'd like to push for, I'd like to see that hybrid model come up. And I think we can get that done in the next month or so.
So there's a question, Superintendent Trinell, how quickly could we mobilize a hybrid model?
We can do it now. We do have the equipment to do it. I do just want to reiterate what Trustee Fong, Director Fong has just mentioned. We definitely have the equipment available to do this. Capacity wise, it does require if we host this in district, it does require several hours for setup and take down, which takes individuals away from their daily technical or typical daily routines in order to make that happen. I know that the city is looking to make any adjustments potentially starting in March for the use of the chambers, which we don't have to manage the setup of all of that equipment. It's done for us. So I can certainly work with whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Thank you. Other trustees? Okay, so this is an action item. We need to
Sorry, President Sheffield, I did have a question. If that's okay. I too like the hybrid model and idea and have actually been finding creative ways to do this without all of the technology that the district has in my place of work. And so I'm wondering like, is would it be possible to, for us to get some support so that staff, that it doesn't take away so much staff time to get this done? I mean, are there, are there ways that we can, you know, bring in some resources to make this happen and so that it's not all on the backs of our staff?
I think that's a great question, Director Manieri. Currently speaking, I don't believe that we have a contract with anyone to provide that kind of service to do all of the setup for us. And so that would have to be something that we look for in order to be able to pay individuals to assist us with that.
And Trustee Medina?
Yeah, I was just going to say, as we look towards the hybrid model, the thing that I imagine is, you know, I envision us maybe individually sitting in person with maybe each one of us having a laptop or device as we do now. But I think the one thing important thing to look at is the bandwidth requirement to any locations whether it's in the city or onsite locations, do we have sufficient bandwidth to manage that? Can we make sure that stuff's tested as we look at these hybrid models?
That's a really good point. And with an understanding of what the city is trying to set up and I believe Superintendent, you mentioned in March that we have that possibility of using their facilities, a hybrid model, but a good question to ask. You know, just check with them, are they equipped to do this type of hybrid?
President Sheffield, they are, they actually have been conducting hybrid with their, the limited capacity even for indoor participation. They have already been conducting hybrid is my understanding.
Yeah, and many of these concerns come up with bandwidth. The, I've not heard anything, but
I haven't either, but I'm happy to follow up with the city on that.
Great, thank you. Trustee De La Cruz? And you just froze on us, it looks like. You're kind of back.
Am I there now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm going to turn off my video to see if that gives me better bandwidth here. My question is about surveying our constituents and if we have done any data collection with regard to where people's priorities and preferences are with regard to hybrid or in-person or Zoom.
We have not done, thank you for the question, Director De La Cruz. We have not done that direct of a surveying recently. And we've utilized our board meeting platform for public comment, I believe, to gain some of that feedback at this time.
So if we're looking at moving in this direction and trying to figure out how we can do it relatively quickly, is it possible to to do a survey, a quick survey in the weeks ahead? And we, this has come up, the survey question has come up before as we've gone through these authorizations. Now, those were in times when we were at the peak of Omicron, but now that we're seeing things open up again and more considerations and we're seeing what other municipalities and jurisdictions are doing around public meetings and hybrid, is that something that we can then incorporate into but maybe to help us guide, we're ready for this or not, or if there's even a a desire for this? We hear from public comment, yes, but do we actually hear from our school community? I don't know.
Just a point of clarification, President Sheffield. The surveying, and I understand I've listened to the public comment, the surveying would be, would the, would our, would our families and our parents, for example, want us to be in person so that they have the ability to be in person themselves at a board meeting or to participate in hybrid, which is currently the hybrid version that we're displaying right now is the ability to be online. The interest is that the board would like to know whether our families and our parents, excuse me, and our community would want you to conduct your meetings in person or through a hybrid lens.
Yeah, is that what you're getting at, Trustee De La Cruz?
No, I'm actually curious about the ability of families to come in person and give testimony or give public comment and whether or not they prefer being online, whether or not that facilitates their access to us and to our board meetings, if they're able to be home with their families or to log on when somebody sends them a text that an item has come up instead of having to rush down to City Hall and sit there or to the board meeting, board to the district office. So I'm actually really thinking about the perspective of our constituents and what they need rather than what they would want for us to do, right? I feel like this is really about what, what do they need in order to feel like they have access to us?
Thank you for that clarity.
And Trustee Medina?
I think in terms of the survey, I think some of the questions that to me seem relevant, it's like, have you attended a board meeting, like physically, online? Would you prefer physical or online? Or are you more likely to attend if it's, you know, in person or online? Those types of questions I think would be relevant, but I think also legally we're required to have them in person. Right now it's just temporary, temporary ordinances that are allowing us to do this. But I think from, from these virtual meetings that we've had, I think we've definitely seen the increase in interaction and participation by people, which to me is awesome. But I think as we move towards a possible hybrid model, I think a long term and it being like the always example to increase that participation. And I think that in anything that comes forward, we also should look at board policies or bylaws as to how meetings are held and what would need to potentially change in terms of those policies for any like future permanent change. Thank you.
Other board members?
Yeah, lastly, I just want to say that, you know, we've been doing this for a very, very long time. And I think it is time for us to start moving to a hybrid model for us to be available to our constituencies. I get it, you know, having that input is important, right? But we were selected to make these decisions at this juncture, right? And you know, the law says that we have to have these meetings in person. We just have a temporary moratorium that says we were allowed not to have them, right? And the fact that we keep pushing this over, you know, and kicking the can down the lane is really exasperating to say the least. I think it's important for us to, you know, make a swift decision and start, you know, meeting at least hybrid. So that way, you know, we are available to those who would like to meet us in person. So.
So Superintendent Trinell, this is the AB31 or AB361 requirement is for a set number of days. So we, it's what, 30 days is that?
Yes, and technically the board voted on February 9th to continue virtual meetings in person for another 30 days, which would have captured up till March 9th. But because there was a question about where we were with the city, I brought this item forward to ensure that the board heard that piece of information.
Okay, that's, the, the day is important. It's good for us to know now. It's my understanding that starting in March, we don't know what date or is there a date where the city might be able to accommodate us in a hybrid situation?
We do not have a date at this time.
So we were then to go ahead and, and vote to reauthorize our AB three sixty-one requirement, that would clear us for thirty days at our next meeting in March. Conceivably, we would be able to have a little bit more information from the city, our ability, just because we're, we've authorized thirty days for three sixty-one does not necessarily mean that we need to use that entire thirty days, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
If I may, just one other detail. If the board does decide to vote for hybrid, there is a rule that does still come into play here, and that is if any board member is not present in person and needs to be in an alternative location, that board member must post a sign wherever that person is and open up the space for the public to attend wherever that person is.
Right, and that goes back to what requirements were, at least for the state of California, for these public meetings anyways. So it would just be reverting back to where, where we had been prior to virtual meetings.
Yes.
Okay, again, a reminder to the board, this is an action item, so further questions, more discussion or motion? Trustee Fong?
So, not really to be kicking down the road, but we really do need the Santa Rosa City to figure out what's going on with council chambers. So I'd like to extend this for just one more month, and then after that, if they still haven't made a decision, I'd like us to think about just opening it up at our own boardroom, do a hybrid. So, but I move this forward.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Motion from trustee Fong, I see trustee Medina's hand raised. No, okay, no hand raised, so we have a motion?
My second.
Okay, seconded by trustee De La Cruz. No further discussion, we ready for a vote? Medina?
Director Beard?
Hi.
Director Fong?
Hi.
Director De La Cruz?
Hi.
Director Manieri?
Hi.
Director McCormick?
Yes, she's not with us this evening, thank you.
So, thank you. Director Flores?
No.
Director Medina?
Hi.
President Sheffield?
Hi. All right, the motion carries now with an understanding that we, this gives us thirty days, not necessarily meaning that we have to use the entire thirty days. Superintendent Trunell, if you can come back to us at our next meeting with further details on the facilities at City Hall, that would be great. All right, we are moving on to, in the agenda to agenda item E two. This is another action item, a resolution for March as Women's History Month. The board will consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-two, recognizing March twenty twenty-two as National Women's History Month. All right, speaker Trunell, I'm gonna turn it over to you again.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield. If we could please bring over Ms. Ola King Clay and Ms. Eva Calderon. They're on their way. Thank you.
And congratulations to Ola King Clay, by the way, for her recent award.
Yes.
Yes, I will mention that too.
I'm attempting to bring over Ms. Clay, but she may be away from her computer.
Okay, I see her, I see her box at least. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Hopefully King Clay, Ms. King Clay is there and is able to hear. Okay, wonderful, good evening.
Welcome.
I would like to welcome Ms. King Clay and Ms. Calderon to our meeting this evening. March is Women's History Month, as you know. And as such, we reflect on the extraordinary accomplishments of women in our history, in our world, in our community, and in our district. Two women of distinction that I have the honor to introduce to everyone tonight are Ms. Ola King Clay, current teacher at Rincon Valley Middle School, and Eva Calderon, our current office manager at Brook Hill Elementary. I've invited these two phenomenal women tonight to recognize each as the longest standing certificated and classified women employees in our district. Collectively, they have over eighty years of experience in Santa Rosa City Schools, making a positive and longstanding impact on generations of students and staff. I'd like to share just a little bit about each person. I would like to start with Ms. Eva Calderon. During the second semester of the nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine school year, Ms. Calderon took a temporary job in the afternoons as a bilingual instructional assistant. She was a senior in high school. In September nineteen eighty, she came back for the same position at Lincoln, Steel Lane, and Monroe on different days. She eventually stayed at Lincoln School for fifteen years as a bilingual instructional assistant. She transferred to Brook Hill to work with families starting in nineteen ninety-three. The district received a new grant and she started working at the, in the office as a tech two and ESOM or elementary school office manager for summer programs. And in two thousand and eight, she took the ESOM job at Brook Hill. So we are recognizing you tonight, Ms. Calderon, and thank you for your service during the recognition of Women's History Month. I'd like to now talk about Ms. Ola King Clay. Ms. King Clay has worked for the Santa Rosa City Schools District for forty engaging years. All of those years have been at Rincon Valley Junior High or Middle School during her tenure. During those years, she has taught world history, PE, geography, and US history, which is one of her favorites because it leans itself to a wide variety of topics for discussion in class. Not only has she taught at Rincon Valley Middle, she has coached girls' basketball, softball, track and field, and gymnastics. In addition, she was an advisor for the cheer and song leaders, school clubs, and student activities or ASB. Ms. King Clay has been involved in coaching for over thirty years and leadership advisor for thirty-five. She has been a Sonoma County Middle Level Educator of the Year back in nineteen ninety-five, and she was just named as the recipient of the Harry Betancourt Character State Award by CADA or the California Association of Directors of Activities. There's so much more that I can share about both of these phenomenal women. And we have many more members in our school district and community who are equally dedicated to our students and our families. I am honored to present the board tonight, the resolution to recognize March as Women's History Month and all snaps forward for these phenomenal women and others. I hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Amazing, amazing. Thank you both. I just love this, this idea of having you both be present and receive recognition along with this resolution. Eighty years of amazing service to the district. That is just incredible. So thank you, thank you so much to the board. This is an action item, so I'm gonna just, are there questions from the board right now? Many questions? I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Not really a question, I was gonna say, I've, I've worked with Ola for so many years, Ola, that's a well deserved sort of recognition. And I just, I just wanted to, you know, I couldn't go on without saying something about Ola. Ola, you've touched, you know, the lives of a lot of people, and I just want to make sure that you're recognized that way, so, uh, thank you, thank you.
So much praise and love for you both.
Congratulations to you both, okay.
Other trustees, questions? All right, well, this is an action item, and we're gonna go to public comment. If we have members of the community who want to comment on this agenda item.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E two, please raise your hand. And, and Gabriela Porter would like to comment.
Hello, thank you tonight, everyone tonight, and that's a wonderful idea. I think women should be recognized in history for everything that they have done despite being marginalized and busy raising kids. And I'd just like to talk a little bit about Rosa Parks. I've been looking at her a lot often for, you know, looking up to her because she said no, and the law was that if you were colored, you had to give up your seat on the bus. And even though everyone thought and knew this was wrong, she had the courage to say no, the same way that everyone on this board has the courage to say no to the mandates and to say no to masking our children and have the courage, like this wonderful woman, Rosa Parks. She knew it was the wrong thing, and despite being in trouble and despite being arrested, she, she stood up for freedom and for liberty and for the things that our great nation was based off of. And I hope that you all will just think about that when you're making these decisions and to also consider that your job as board members is the what. The superintendent is the how, so what you guys want to do, you need to vote for it. And is the superintendent's job to figure out how to make it possible. So I want you all to just believe in yourselves and what is true to you and what is the right thing to do for liberty and for freedom and for justice for these children that are under your power at this moment and for, that are waiting to be liberated. And I'd also like to say that there are forty-five other states that are unmasked right now, and there are only five states left, one of which is California. Please be brave.
Thank you, and once again, this is commenting on a resolution for March as Women's History Month. Next is Amy Schluter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I am a Ola King Clay fan. I met her in two thousand and seven when I first became a teacher in the Santa Rosa City School District and was immediately drawn to her as she is a natural teacher and coach and mentor. And now I get the privilege and the pleasure of working with her again, joining the Rincon Valley team this summer, and she is worthy of every award she has ever received. And I feel privileged to continue my work with her at Rincon Valley this year, so thank you so much, and I am in full support of this resolution.
Thank you. Next public comment on this item is Mark Mitchell.
Hi, my name is Mark Mitchell, and I have, I wanted to voice my support for the resolution in honor of Women's History Month, and I want to say that Ola King Clay is not only a woman of distinction in her district, in her school, and in her community, but also in her union. She has served in virtually every capacity that a leader in the California Teachers Association and the Santa Rosa Teachers Association could take on. She's been the president of SRTA. She currently serves as the chair of the Sonoma County Educators Council, and she is also the vice chair of the Redwood Service Center Council, representing teachers all the way up to the Oregon border. She's been on the State Council of Education for nine years. She's an extraordinary woman and a woman that is, serves with distinction in her union of educators as well as in her school and, and with her students and her community. And I just want to say, I'm honored to have worked with her the last five years, and I know she has many more years of service to give to her students and to all of us that have the privilege of working with her. Congratulations, Ola, and kudos to the board for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on item E two is Lynn Satow.
Hello, that's Lynn Satow? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, and thank you for that correction.
I, oh, no problem. Wanna say thank you so much to these two beautiful, amazing women, and yes, for Women's History and Black History Month as well. And I also just want that we need to recognize also the anniversary, that's the Black Eye on our history on February nineteen, nineteen forty-two, when the orders were against, you know, Japanese. And well sad that it hasn't been brought up, you know, at the beginning, but at the meeting, we must recognize, you know, all races and everything, but that's my statement. I want to say thank you again to the two very beautiful, amazing women. I'm all for that, but let's not cherry pick history also, but thank you.
Thank you. Next is Monique Luke.
In full support of this resolution. I am in full support of this resolution, but I want to honor these two women as well, celebrate them, but for Ms. Ola King Clay, when I first came to Santa Rosa City Schools and saw her standing in a multipurpose room at Elsie Allen as the union president, I was so proud to see someone who looked like me doing something like that, and she totally inspired me, and I want to thank you for, for hanging in there. I know it wasn't easy over these past forty years, but you didn't give up, you've overcome, you stood strong. The respect that you have from your colleagues is, it's just really awesome, and thank you Superintendent Trunell for this space to honor her and also your name, your name, Ms. Caldera called. So I just wanted to say that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Mott.
Hello, I wanted to recognize both women, but speak on behalf of Ms. King Clay as a parent who, you haven't heard from a parent yet, but since I'm here watching tonight, I have to say that Ms. King Clay was my daughter's teacher in, at Rincon Valley, and one thing that hasn't been brought up yet is she was the chaperone for the Washington DC trip and brought these children to Washington DC, seventh and eighth graders. And they had the times of, the time of their lives, they made memories. She also had you as a history teacher, which was also wonderful, Emma. My daughter's name is Emma Mott. But, so I just wanted to make, take the time to just say that you are appreciated as, as a teacher and as a mentor to young people and that, you know, bravery in all areas, but taking a big group of children on an airplane and doing all that you did there and how much fun they had. So we always appreciate our teachers, and I just wanted to give you a shout out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and next is Indy Monday.
Good evening, I hope that you can hear me. I'm in full support of this resolution, and I especially want to appreciate Ms. Eva Calderon, who is my right-hand woman at Brook Hill. As a former teacher of Brook Hill and now the principal, I have personally benefited from her true dedication to Brook Hill. She truly embodies putting students, families, and staff first. Thank you, Eva, for all you do. You truly deserve this recognition, and I personally appreciate you. And thank you for the ability to comment.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised for this item.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring it back to the board for discussion or further questions or a motion. I see.
I'd like to move to adopt the resolution, recognizing March twenty twenty-two as Women's History Month.
A second.
All right, so it's been moved by trustee De La Cruz to adopt the resolution, seconded by trustee Manieri. Oh, I see trustee Fong's hand raised. We want to go back to you.
So I want to make a comment, and I just want to say that, you know, as a, as a former history teacher, the fact that we have to have a month to teach women's history is, that begs the question, right? There's, there's something right there. So I just want to highlight something that was written in our board agenda, that we in honor of the pioneer, pioneering women who came before us and in recognition of those who will come after us this month, should be all. should be all months, we recommit to erasing the remaining inequities facing women in our day. And there are inequities facing women of our day. And I want us as as our mission and vision for our school district that we elevate our young girls, our young ladies, our women, that their potential is limitless. And so when we all do that, and I think we do, sky's the limit. And it's not just March, right? Yes, it's all year long. So yes. So third to the resolution.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. All right, so we have.
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. I know I raised my hand and then.
That's all right.
I just want to say thank you to Ola and to Eva and to just put my my gratitude out there for all of the work that you've done in this district and all of the service. It's it's truly inspiring. I'm inspired. Like you make me want to be an educator and I want to teach history and I want to make sure that that we carry on your legacy. And so I'm just so, so, so grateful. And then I also just want to say that with this resolution, I don't want it to be lost on us that that we are inclusive of of not only our cisgendered women or self-identifying cisgendered women, but also of our of our trans community, our LGBTQ community. However, folks identify that we are inclusive in our resolution and our and and in our recognition.
Thank you, Trustee Manieri. All right. Moved by Trustee De La Cruz, seconded by Trustee Manieri, thirded by Trustee Fong. Are we ready for a vote?
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
I. All right, the motion passes. Hurrah on the adoption of the resolution, recognizing March as National Women's History Month. And thank you to these amazing gems that we have in the district, Eva and Ola. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to Agenda Item E three, another action item, a resolution for Arts and Education Month. The board will consider approval of Resolution Number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, declaring March as Arts Education Month in Santa Rosa City Schools. We have Dr. Armstrong presenting.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trenell, members of Santa Rosa City Schools and partners. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. It's a pleasure to introduce the Art Resolution, recognizing March as the Arts Education Month as well. Art is an important part of whole child learning. And even when I was a math teacher, I found ways to connect art. And I want to know that the pandemic was especially devastating for our performance-based classes. And for some, it's going to take time to rebuild their program. And we have committed to standing alongside programs as they restore and renew. We also commit to supporting classrooms with the resources they need to run a successful program. So as you take action on this item, I want to encourage you to attend a spring concert or showcase. And as the resolution states, I ask all educational stakeholders to become familiar with and celebrate the value and benefits provided by arts education and their related programs.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Do we have questions from members of the board? Seeing no questions. Do you want to go to public comment? Can we go to public comment for questions, comments from the public?
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E three, the Resolution for Arts Education Month, please raise your hands. And Sheila Walker would like to comment.
Good evening, Board and Supervisor Trenell. Again, I just want to thank Dr. Armstrong and the board for bringing this forward. I have a son who is in performing arts. He's a musician in band. And I think she stated it very eloquently that the kids and the students in performing arts have really had a tough time with the pandemic. You know, the sports, sports happened last year, but the kids didn't get to practice, you know, it's kind of hard to practice your trumpet and then, you know, no performances. So thankful this year they've had at least one event, but unfortunately, when Dr. Mace put that fifty person rule in, all of the kids, not just the Santa Rosa City School music and band kids that made it to honor band, which is supposed to be like a weekend event, a big event for the whole county, it was canceled because they couldn't reschedule it. So all of those students, my son was a sixth grader when schools closed for the pandemic. And now he's in eighth grade. He's had one school performance since December as a sixth grader. And now he's an eighth grader. So we are enjoying music. My son's enjoying music for what is what what the teachers and the schools are able to provide now. But I do appreciate this coming forward and the performing arts, whether it's singing, music, dance, theater, these kids, please come out and watch them and support them as was recommended by Dr. Armstrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Joe. Joe, would you please state your full name for the records?
Yes, my name is Joe Murray or Robert Murray legally. But thank you for giving me this time. I would just like to show support for this resolution for the same reasons that Dr. Armstrong has mentioned. A lot of students really need more opportunities to perform and show off their talents, especially for seniors who have intentions of making those arts their career, especially the performing arts and most definitely visual arts. These showcases and performances can be a career-defining moment. So if we can make this Art Education Month an annual event, then that'd be fantastic for especially the seniors interested in art-based careers. It'd be a fantastic opportunity for them to get a head start or a leg up in their careers. And hopefully they can, you know, find an art recruiter who would be able to pick them up and shove them in the right direction for their careers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, we are going to bring it back to the board for further discussion, further questions or motion. Trustee Manieri.
I move to approve the Resolution for Arts Education Month.
Thank you. All right, seconded by Trustee Medina. So moved by Trustee Manieri, seconded by Trustee Medina.
And then I also have a comment, President Sheffield.
Yes, please.
Um, I just want to say a really big thank you. I just want to give a really big thank you to all of the our arts educators who have sent invitations to concerts and recitals and performances. I can't always make them, but I really do appreciate the invitation. And I just want to encourage you all to keep sending them because I will, I will make one. And so I just really want to appreciate, I just want to send that gratitude. And then also just say how how just add my voice to the importance of this. I was also a musician in Santa Rosa City Schools at Elsie Allen High School. And my music, my band classes sometimes were the only days I'd get up and go to school. And so I know how important it is. And and we hear you, those of you who have felt the impact of not being able to have those opportunities for your students or students who are listening in right now and just want to reaffirm our dedication to to the arts in our district.
Thank you, Trustee Manieri. Do I see your hand wave? I do see your hand, Trustee Fong.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm having such weird connection problems right now. I'm really proud of our district, the grant we received and how we're using it with the music blitzs and all that. And because we're getting more kids into the arts and having what I know about secondary schools is secondary schools very scary. And when kids can find their their home in art of some sort, that is their home. School becomes amazing then. And I've just seen it so many times. I think there was a question raised about charter schools and what's going on with music there. And I don't, I don't know what's going on, but I think we need to make sure that they're included too. And I'm not sure if I'm saying this wrong or not, but I did hear a comment about that. So anyway, yes, to arts education. Thank you. Good job, everybody.
Trustee Medina.
Thank you. I want to say a couple of things. First, I am completely not artistically inclined. But I love art. I I do do art at times as a and I find that it's really helpful for my mental health. And I think students being engaged in it, it's it's a very valuable lifetime tool. I remember to my first introduction to Broadway theatrical plays was in French class at Elsie Allen when we went to see Phantom of the Opera. I fell in love with it then and I love place now and I always like to check them out. I I in response to Dr. Armstrong's request, this may be for an information item later, but I think if we can get like a consolidated list of all upcoming events and performances that could be put in a future board agenda information item, both for us and for the public, that would be great.
Great. Love the idea. I see Trustee De La Cruz's hand raised.
Thanks.
You are fading out though.
Experiencing some connectivity.
Think we can kind of hear you.
Okay, I just same joining the shout out to arts educators. And in particular, I wanted to shout out Madeline and Sterling, who were the student authors of the Art Quest Theater piece for La Nea. It was the piece of art that most made me understand what our kids are going through during COVID. And it was so beautiful and it was so raw. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity that arts education gives our kids to express themselves when nothing makes sense.
Thank you. All right, I believe we're ready for a vote now. Adina.
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, hooray on the passage of this resolution, recognizing March twenty-second as Arts Education Month, coming from a band nerd and a drama queen, just reaffirming our support for arts as well as our commitment to continue working with our students to develop all of their talents. We are moving on to Agenda Item E four, an action item. This is our COVID update prevention program and COVID nineteen handbook revisions. As part of the state safe schools for all plan, there is a requirement for all local education agencies to develop and submit a COVID nineteen safety plan for in-person learning. We are going to be joined by Executive Director, Special Services, Steve Mazzara, and we have Superintendent Trenell to help us with this agenda item. Turning it over to you, Superintendent Trenell.
Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board, community staff and all guests. And thank you, Mr. Mazzara, for continuing to support this work.
Sure.
Hopefully with board action, we'll have a lot of help on this to relieve you some from some of this work. But tonight, Board, we bring to you recent updates to our CPP and our COVID safety plan or CSP. Steve, are you going to share your screen?
I will.
Okay, perfect. We do have a presentation tonight to outline some of those adjustments and also to keep you up to speed on where we're at with certain mandates and so forth. So with that, I will ask Mr. Mazzara to share his screen and to share some information.
Thank you very much, President Sheffield, board members and Superintendent Trenell. Let me see if I can get to my slideshow. Thank you. So I want to give a quick update. We're doing a couple of things today. The CPP is something that we had to establish and and approve back last spring. We approved it back on January twenty-seventh. And it was part of the return to school process that was outlined by Governor Newsom and Kalosha. And in that original plan, we had a number of safety protocols and outlines that were relevant at the time. Since that time, Kalosha has required us to do an update primarily based on a major couple of revisions that happened in December, became effective in January. And so we're bringing those forward to that. So a part of this, your action tonight is to update the COVID CPP, the COVID Protection Plan Program. The other piece we're doing is we're bringing in again more updates. Since we last had our update in January, of course, there's been new information. And as was alluded to earlier, there will be more information coming out about masking and school settings on the twenty-eighth. And so we will probably come back again with an update. So for now, in the moments we have, let me kind of bring us through to where we have been, where we are. And then a couple of discussion points of the substantive stuff under the Kalosha CPP. I'm also then we're going to talk about as we react to the changes in the community transmission and our our school transmissions. We're reacting and changing our intervention strategies as we discussed when we implemented them. So the first thing I want to remind everybody back is where we were. So as as little as on the twelfth, when we presented last time, if you look at the upper right side, you can obviously see the graph. We were having two thousand in the last twenty-four hours, two thousand cases that were reported inactive in our county by the middle of January. As of this Friday, when I pulled this screenshot off, we only had two hundred and two. So as you can also see by the graph, we have reduced drastically almost to our pre surge levels, which would have been back in early December. Similarly, our data in our schools that we track and promote weekly have also dropped. We've been tracking this, of course, since the beginning of the school year. And you can see similarly, we are almost down to our pre Omicron surge levels. In terms of just our real numbers, you see that we highlighted in yellow is when we began to, if you recall, we passed out rapids, rapid tests that came to the school sites from the state. We passed those out right at the beginning of that first week in January. And you can see those numbers certainly highlighting six hundred and eighty-eight, that that week of our board meeting, in fact, down to three twenty-nine. And you see the drop to last week's number of a total of forty-eight. So one thing it's also important to note, not only are these numbers going down, but because of our access to rapids and because there's some shifting in the state mandates, students and teachers were able to return sooner than they previously had. So in our last update, it was allowed that's that students and teachers could come back to work after having a positive COVID case. If on day five, they took a rapid and it was negative and their symptoms were reducing. So not only were our numbers going down, this also accelerated the amount of students and staff that were returning to school. And so that was very strong for us to minimize the impact of these numbers during the Omicron surge. As of last Thursday, we had another update from the county. So remember, there are multiple agencies at work here. So just as a quick summary, we all know about the CDC and their recommendations. They are a recommend recommending body only. They don't have direct authority in our school setting. They then go to our California Department of Public Health, CDPH, which makes recommendations to CDE, all of which have to be validated by our local county, which then gives us our information. And so that's what happened last week. You all know about in the general setting that masks were reduced, but it hadn't been determined by our county health what that impact is in our school settings. So as of last Thursday, this is presented, and I want to highlight a couple of things on here. This is making a distinction between unvaccinated and fully vaccinated people. I want to note that booster eligibility is not a factor in this table in consideration. What this is telling us primarily for our school setting is that masking for unvaccinated students and staff are required a hundred percent of the time. There is not a moment for an unvaccinated person in our school settings to not have a mask. Whoops, forgive me. Fully vaccinated person. This is kind of the news that was alluded to earlier by Ms. Howell. Is that there has been flexibility for fully vaccinated people now. To in with in when there is no presence of students. That they are allowed to be unmasked. So what this means from the county is that when we're at our district office. Or it's after school hours and the office staff does not have students around. There is the ability for fully vaccinated staff to not have to wear a mask. However, there are other rules that govern us. There are the MOUs that have previously been mentioned. And those those issues will still have to be determined with our various organizations and associations. So that's just information for the board to understand. And as also mentioned, we are waiting for Dr. Galley to give us an update on the twenty eighth. And we are hoping that it will move in the direction that other states. Were obviously also mentioned in public comment that are moving away from masking in schools. However, there are still conversations to be had as part of our MOU and our education code. Specifically to the Kalosha changes, there are a couple of bigger things that we must note. First of all, we all should understand that staff that are not fully boosted. And are eligible to be boosted have to begin testing twice a week. So board, you may remember, we are currently testing employees that have chosen not to tell us about our vaccination status. Or are not fully vaccinated, and they are tested weekly. So that changed in January, and is now the the implementation date was moved from February to March. And so we'll begin that next week. In addition to that, addition to if you're not fully vaxxed was added if you are not boosted. So what that means for us is you have to be eligible to be a booster. So as an example. Boosters right now are recommended about five months after your second vaccination. So if I just became second vaccinated, I'm not eligible for a booster. I do not have to test. Do not have to test weekly. Fifteen days after becoming booster eligible, so that being five months and fifteen days, I do have to test. So that's an example of one of the things we are beginning to work on, getting information, confirming information with our employees. And we will begin that implementation next week. Another important thing that came out of the Kalosha updates is that under that same process of self-testing, there is a notation that. This administration of the employees and their testing above has to be observed by employer or an authorized telehealth proctor. So what that means for us is that somebody at 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 school or some designee that we do. Has to supervise that the employee actually did the testing. And that is that was raised because of their concerns. That if we're not seeing the employee test, it may not be their test. They may be using another test or not doing it properly. And so for the accuracy of that, Kalosha is making that requirement. And lastly, lastly, in the new Kalosha requirements, there's updates about masking and clarifications. Two layers are important in there. Tight fitting must be above the nose and the mouth. But I want to remember, these are for employees. There there are very similar requirements for students, but this is specifically to employees. And then. As a response to our our lessening in our COVID cases, we are looking at it. Unimplementing a couple of items that we began to implement in January. That would be the daily health screener for through parent square for students and employees. We were taking temperatures at our indoor sporting events. We will discontinue that. There is a change in the. Indoor capacity requirements, and it's under a thousand at this point. And the the threshold simply means that above a thousand indoor, you have to begin looking at spacing requirements and vaccination status. And then we are going to talk about allowing in-person meetings as long as we can maintain the other precautions that we've been doing before December. And that is masking indoors, ventilation as much as possible, and then spacing as we can. And then the last thing, when we did our presentation as study session in September, and we had representatives from from county public health. They talked about using pool testing and and being reflective of the rates in the community. And so that was if the rates go down, the frequency of pool testing can go down. And so with that recommendation, we will look at if the rates continue, that we will drop those rates. Sorry, we'll drop to every other week of pool testing. And you know, forgive me, I missed a slide, so forgive me. Getting back to pool testing, I forgot the update. So we have fifty five hundred people currently signed up for pool testing. We last week administered four thousand nine hundred ninety two tests. We identified fourteen individuals that were positive. And what that means for us is we think if that trajectory continues, we should be on track to lower rates, lower the frequency, as I mentioned, after spring break. Also want to note, of course, we are continuing our asymptomatic PCR testing at Lewis. Those hours remain the same Monday through Thursday, two thirty to five. We also then, if you recall, board, we are partnered with Sonoma County. And on Mondays and Fridays, we have been having symptomatic testing at Lewis as well. They have asked to expand that. They have asked to do basically an all-day rapid process. So we are going to be beginning, sorry, we already began that Friday, forgive me. That we are using the same Lewis Mondays, Monday and Friday in the morning. Actually, it was now changed from nine until four o'clock after I posted this. So that's just continuing our partnership and working at, and that also becomes part of the public will also be advised. And so this will be one of the county's public such public. Testing sites where was previously just kind of students and families. So back to where we were, I mentioned previously that Dr. Galley will be making. An announcement, we think on February twenty eighth. And at that point, we will continue our conversations as was noted. That kind of kicks off some conversations with our employee associations, and we'll begin that shortly thereafter. And with that, I think we're at point taking any questions from the board.
Thanks, Steve. We have questions from the board. All right, I'm not seeing any questions. This is an update to the COVID Protection Program and Safety Handbook. We will now. Take it to public comment. We have members of the public who wish to speak on this item.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E four, please raise your hand at this time. And Micah Carlin Goldberg would like to comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I teach sixth grade at Steel Lane. I want to thank the board for finally getting asymptomatic testing in our schools, the pool testing. For those people who think that this is a terrible thing. Our students walk out the door, they swab their nose, they walk back in and go back to class. It does not traumatize them. What does traumatize students is being sick and worrying about getting their family members sick. I'm looking at my attendance report for my students for the year so far. We're one hundred and nineteen days in, and so that's three thousand one hundred twenty six days enrolled for my students. Of which, for two hundred and three of those days, which is seven percent of every school day. I have had students, so seven percent of the enrolled days, how my students have been absent either medical. Or quarantine, which means in most cases having COVID or being out waiting for tests. That's sixty five percent of my students have been on quarantine at least once. Most of the, we've had several that have been on quarantine two or three times. Based on the chart that the school district just showed, fourteen percent of our students have already had COVID. I only have three students have been here every day this year, and I only have six who have not missed a day due to medical or quarantine. One of my students has missed twenty five days due to medical and quarantine, which is twenty one percent of the school district, school year, excuse me. The idea that we're going to remove masking indoors when my students can't get farther than two and a half feet apart from each other horrifies me. I am disheartened and distant and just horrified by the fact that our society has decided that we no longer need to protect our most vulnerable people. The idea that we can take off masks is privilege. It's bare privilege. The people who cannot protect themselves because they're immunocompromised or other reasons need us to protect them. Please keep masking even if the state asks us to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheila Walker for item E four, two-minute time limit.
Hi, thank you, board. Yeah, I I you know, I don't play Wordle, but I have actively participated for over a year with the board and the school district here. And I don't know if there are any red tiles in Wordle. So if there are, I I I don't know, but this looks like a huge red warning flag. I heard SRTA mention in their report earlier. You know, they put it in there at least a couple of times how they're looking forward to negotiating. I just heard a teacher. Speak like. Like there's COVID hysteria in our schools, and I will now take this to myself as a person who has a student that goes to school, who is horrified. Who is. Has high levels of anxiety and OCD. He needs normal, and all of these kids need normal. If our teachers and staff want to continue masking, mask. If students who need to be masked, mask. If this district. Does not follow the guidelines, if, if or when the state changes it. That we can be mask optional in schools, you're going to see a lot of red wordles. And for me, a red wordle means more exits from this district. We are rule followers. My son's a rule follower. I've been a masker. I am vaccinated. But at some point, people have got a drop that we're going to get to COVID zero. And if we have to battle this out as parents with the unions. Maybe you guys will be happy. I won't be on these meetings any longer. I'm out of here. And so are a lot of other families. Let us let our kids have some normalcy and let's follow the California guidelines if they drop them.
Thank you. Next is M. Gabriela Porter.
Hello, again, thank you all for hearing, hearing me out. I have a lot to say. You know, I'm just upset. My kids are little and I do want them to have a sense of normalcy. And what I've found is that parents are talking about the anxiety that's happening in their kids right now. And it doesn't show up like you would think. They're not saying I'm scared, I'm scared. What it is, is like they're having trouble sleeping more than just the normal. They're talking to their parents like, Mom, did I do this? And no, it this is, this is, you know, more severe than that. Kids, for example, my kids used to love going to the store with me. I'd get them like one of those little Kinder Eggs and they'd get a toy. And it'd be a chance for them to have one-on-one time with either my husband and I, and they don't want to do that anymore. Do you want to go? No. Want to go dog? No. It's really scary. I have neighbor friends whose kids have slept over and had night terrors. And I asked, you know, they said, oh, yeah, I forgot to mention about that. It just came out of nowhere. Like, what? I've never heard of these things happening. I mean, if you guys check out the urgency of normal, some doctors in San Francisco that are bipartisan. Saw that there's an uptick in anxiety, depression, and suicide attempts. And this is the real problem right now, and I am an advocate for teachers. I think teachers are amazing. I want to thank them. So much for sticking with us and doing this alongside of us, and I would. And you know, I'm really torn because my heart goes out to the teachers, but my heart always also goes out to the kids that are suffering right now. And I don't know what the right answer is because they're both really, really bad choices, right? Like we give our kids normal, but then we we scare our teachers and they're fearful. But there has to be some middle grounds, like building outside schools or more structures, so teachers that are really scared can go outside. But I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Smith.
Hi, board. I was hoping I wasn't going to have to speak on this topic. Just addressing a few of the comments tonight. You know, I just want to point out the MOU that might be coming up. We might be having a discussion point over. Our labor unions don't really have the right to collectively bargain away students' rights. You know, if they need to deal with whatever they need to protect themselves, that's fine, but you know, students, you have a right to go to school and get a real education. So that's one. Two, the asymptomatic testing just seems to be somewhat overkill at this point. I mean, we found fourteen cases out of five thousand tests. That's a zero point three percent positivity rate. That's extremely low. It's probably not actually picking up any or mitigating any transmission. That's another thing. And then the last thing is we'll see later tonight. In E seven, that relaxing these restrictions is actually critical to the financial health of the district. We need to figure out how to increase enrollment, not have it keep declining. So make sure that you're addressing the needs of families and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Janet Suarez.
Hello, I'm a senior at San Rosa High School, so I have seen firsthand how many school days my peers miss due to having to quarantine. And although case numbers are thankfully decreasing, I really hope the board members keep in mind the safety and well-being of San Rosa students. I don't think we should ease up on COVID restrictions. I think. I understand that many families are having a lot of difficulties with this restrictions, and I understand that completely. But I really do think we should. Have in forefront the. Just be having public health interest in mind during these times. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your comments this evening. Going to bring it back to the board for discussion, further questions or motion. I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Thank you, President Sheffield. I just think that, you know, we've had a history of following CDPH guidelines. And I think it will be prudent for us to keep following those guidelines. I I think it will be a little bit hypocritical on our behalf if we end up going against those requirements. So we don't know exactly what they're going to come up with, but I think it's important for us to to be consistent. As we've made decisions in the past here, as a collective board, to make sure that, you know, we follow those guidelines. And obviously, following, you know, county guidelines as well. I I just think that's important for for. For our decision-making. And, you know, we'll see what the state has to say, you know, next week. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Board member Beard.
Ever since the mask mandate lifted in stores and just in the general public, I've been talking to students about how they feel about masks in school. And with it lifting everywhere else, it's kind of raised a little bit of. Antsiness to get rid of them in class. Most people I've talked to would prefer to not wear masks, but. Having it be can, having it be optional would be ideal for the majority of people that I've talked to.
Thank you, Georgia. Omar, trustee Medina.
Thank you. Just in anticipation of anything that potentially can change at the state level, some of the. Questions and our concerns that I have in terms of like potential protocols. If there's. A change towards making masking optional. I think questions that I'd like to tune up for future, is that going to be something that would require some sort of parental form or or or. Rocked in or something, and would would then teachers be. To monitor all that. And so if that's something we'd have to negotiate, I think, I'm not expecting answers now, but I think for for future addressing this. And also one of the concerns. If it becomes optional, I think of, you know, I I don't know what the situation would be, but then. If if some students are different, some students are are with mask, some are without any potential like bullying or teasing that may occur from that. How we may address that or at least anticipate those potential issues that may arise. So I just want those things to be considered, you know, based on anything that may happen in the future at the state level.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Other board members. Okay, this is an action item. We are seeking approval of the updated COVID Prevention Program and COVID nineteen handbook revisions.
Sorry, I just, I did have one. You know, I'm 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 listening and and I really appreciate everyone who has spoken this evening. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm listening and I really appreciate everyone who has spoken this evening. And I'm listening to my colleagues on the board. And something that just keeps coming up for me, it, you know, I keep hearing this like phrase in my head that guidelines are the floor. Like, we have seen time and time again how policies have just been the floor, like certain policies have just been the floor. And when we're talking about public health and when we're talking about protecting our community, we're not talking about what's at the floor. And so I just, I want us to remember that, like there are certain things that we did as a district that it wasn't the floor. It wasn't what was mandatory or not mandatory, whatever. You know, we didn't have to provide certain things or certain services or certain resources, but we felt it important to do that. And that is, I think, what we need to be consistent with because we know that our policies and our guidelines are the floor. So I just, I just, I know that there's a lot up in the air. We don't know what's going to happen. We have to wait until the 28th or after the 28th, but I just want us to remember that.
Very good point. Thank you, Trustee Manier. You know, and, and, yeah, I work in health. My wife works in public health. And, you know, for these past two years, we've just seen kind of a wave of what's going on. And here we've been trying to get ahead of things using the best possible science and using the recommendations and guidelines that are put forward by this country and the world's top scientists. And, you know, somebody had brought up during public comment about, about the CSBA conference, the school board conference in San Diego, we attended. And we attended this at a time when there was a downturn. We had gotten through the Delta variant, and this was before the Omicron variant. And we were taking all precautions, for those of you who didn't know, what we needed to travel and what we needed to attend the convention. You know, those were using best judgments and scientific expertise by, again, people who work in the field of public health. Stephanie, I like the way that you phrase these guidelines because I think that us as policymakers, we do need to consider these things. And we, we can't, we can't jump the gun and second guess during the pandemic. We, that, you know, regardless of how anty we are, it really is something that we have, it weighs on us to, 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 to look at all possible aspects if we're going to be effective policymakers. Trustee Medina, your hand is raised.
I just like to, would like to move that we approve the updates to the COVID prevention program and revisions to the COVID-19 handbook.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Medina, seconded by Trustee Flores. Are we ready for a vote?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I want to just appreciate and thank our district administrators, our school folks, site folks, parents who have hung in there for two years with COVID, which has taken up all the air in the room, literally, figuratively. And there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel, finally. And following the floor, Stephanie, yes, absolutely, we follow the floor. But we do more when we, when our kids' social emotional learning is at stake. And that's what I'm very proud of. So I'm very proud of our district. We're a learning organization. We are not health experts, but we are learning and we are doing our best, as is everyone else in our whole system. Students, parents, staff. Thank you so much, especially Steve Mazera. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. Much gratitude to Steve and staff and everybody at our schools. Trustee De La Cruz.
I just had one comment and I wanted to read a quote from somebody who moves me on a pretty regular basis. The quote starts like this, "We will not go back to normal. Normal never was. Our pre-Corona existence was not normal, other than we normalized greed, inequity, exhaustion, depletion, extraction, disconnection, confusion, rage, hoarding, hate, and lack. We should not long to return, my friends. We are being, being given the opportunity to stitch a new garment, one that fits all of humanity and nature." That's a quote by Sonia Renee Taylor. And that's what really moves me in this moment is to recognize the opportunity that we have with all that we've learned and all that we know about where those, where those places in our society are that we need to look at more deeply and with more love and more care. And if necessary, more regulation, right? Because we've seen the impacts of, of not looking there and of, of, of being okay with that invisibility. And I'm, I'm not okay with that. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity that we have to build something new and different that doesn't go back to something that was never working in the first place. I also think that there is such an, I don't know, so, so many things that we, you know, going to Lori's kind of gratitude place, I'd really love for us to say, what is working for kids who are masked? You know, what is working to build that connection that can be more difficult when your face is covered? You know, how, how can we lift up those, those amazing lessons that we have learned about how connectivity is built and sustained and, and nourished in times that are really hard? So adding my voice of gratitude and also of optimism and hope and creativity.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz. All right, we have a motion from, from Trustee Medina, seconded by Trustee Flores. We're now ready for a vote. Adina?
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, the motion passes for the approval of the updated COVID prevention program and COVID-19 handbook revisions. Thank you again, Steve, for all the work that you're doing. And again, thank you to all of our school site staff. We are moving on to Agenda Item E5. This is an Action Item Resolution 20212234. To select adjusted trustee area map, the Board will consider approval of this resolution addressing required adjustments to the RCS trustee area map. After the release of the 2020 federal census data, the Board must approve adjustments of trustee area boundaries to make sure the population and demographics of each trustee area is balanced. We have Milton joining us this evening. Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
We could bring Milton over.
He's on his way.
Great. All right, it looks like we have Milton Superintendent Truenell. Am I going to turn it over to you? And then before we, there we go. Mr. Foster, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Board members, Superintendent District Administrator staff. We've come now to the conclusion of this process. Where we're at now is that we have before you the resolution and the selection from one of the, the three maps that we have had now up for the Board's review and consideration and also feedback from the community. Just by way of recap, I will, if I have the authority, share my screen just to kind of review the three maps that are before you. Hold on just a second. All right, so this is scenario, scenario one. Again, you know, just to recap, we, the goal here is to get the district's population variance back beneath 10%. All of the three proposed maps do that. So just by way of recap, this is scenario one here. You know, this gives a, an accurate representation. Of course, we also have the Google Maps version that if you're able to go online, you could get down to, you know, to every street if you wanted to zoom in to just kind of confirm where the boundaries lie. But for this particular map, this has a total variance of 6.1%. And so this map is legally compliant and is eligible for selection by the Board. We also have scenario two here. The differences are, you know, relatively minor. Primarily exists here in this sort of rabbit's foot here, if you will. And then there's a section here where it's, you know, it's a little bit different than, you know, scenario one. But you will see the, the numbers are relatively comparable. The total variance here is 6.4%. And then we finally have for the Board's consideration, scenario three, which you can see again, the rabbit's foot in comparison to numbers one and two. We also have this area here. And again, you can see more of a kind of a called the bootleg here, the cowboy boot. That is a little more distinctive than in some of the other scenarios. But the, the main thing for this scenario here is that it is 5.5% variance. And so, stop, you know, I don't, at this juncture, I'll take any questions. But in terms of the process, we are now at the, the time for the Board to have discussion and then to make a determination and adopt the resolution selecting which map will be its trustee area map moving forward, commencing with the 2022 governing board election.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I see we have Trustee Flores' hand raised.
Thank you, Milton. I think there was a typo in scenario three. It showed us, the last slide it showed said there were two. Just letting you know, I just want to make sure that's, that's corrected and that the public knows that it was just a typo. And then in terms of, is the best balanced map the one with the lowest variance? Is that, is that a good way to explain this?
Well, I guess there's a number of factors that you need to consider. One of the things that you're trying to accomplish, of course, is to get the population variance beneath 10%. Once you're beneath 10%, the map is satisfactory. The closer to zero, there is a, you know, that's more towards, you know, in a perfect world, you would want the areas to be perfectly balanced. But you balance trying to get the variance closer to zero, to zero against whether or not, you know, there are any other statistics or characteristics you need to be mindful of. For example, if we go with a map with a lower variance, but it, you know, unnecessarily breaks up a community that you think that should be together. For example, the rabbit's foot, right? If the rabbit's foot is something that you like, well, that's a big deal. Well, then, you know, that may be a factor in you saying, well, we may go with a different selection, even though it's a higher variance because we have a justification for doing so because of the rabbit's foot, for example. So that's, you know, but the ideal, yes, is to try and get the variance as low as possible. But the reality is anything beneath 10% is fine. It's acceptable. And these were, you know, kind of really within a half a percent of one another.
Okay. And I just have to say publicly that, you know, I had a discussion, was it through here? Forget with Director Manieri, because it looks like we, we, we're exchanging neighborhoods. And I think we decided that those neighborhoods were all neighborhoods and they were not being split, right? Stephanie, is that, is that correct? So.
Yeah, sorry, if I could just.
Sure.
I actually thought that those neighborhoods are adequately placed in, in your trustee area ever. So I, yeah, the, the change, I don't see it as anything problematic.
Okay, perfect. That's it. Well, that's my only questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Trustee Manier.
Yeah, I, I have a question and it's kind of for, for everyone. I know I didn't receive any communication from folks about maps or about their thoughts. So I'm just kind of wondering if anyone has, because I would love to know that.
You're, you mean from the, from the public?
From the public, yeah.
Nothing for me.
I have not heard a thing either, no emails or whenever I, you know, gone, you know, campaigning, haven't heard anything about it. So, but I'm looking forward to the new neighborhoods.
Well, thank you for that.
Other questions? Before I go to the public, I, I, I just, I want to state a couple of things just for general knowledge and before we come back for a vote on this item as well. So kind of a recap overview. As we all know, the district previously transitioned from an at-large election system to a by-trustee area election system. However, after reviewing current trustee areas and based on the most recent census data, the district's demographer has determined that the trustee area map is not in compliance with California Education Code 5019.5. The district has provided opportunity for the community to provide input on adjusted map options under consideration to ensure population balance is reinstated. Today at this meeting, the governing board, us, we will consider in vote to adopt a resolution and select an adjusted trustee area plan. Now, the matter is put before the governing board to adopt the proposed resolution and to select an adjusted trustee area plan that provides the required population balance. Members of the Board, we have this up for discussion, further discussion. But I wanted to make it really clear before we went to public comment so that they are aware, for those who may not have been following the meeting in the previous meetings that we have had, the hearings that we've had as well, that, that it's clear that this is a process. This has been an ongoing process that we have been going through for weeks. And it is required for us to, to make a determination on a map moving forward tonight to ensure that our trustee areas are adjusted and population balanced. With that, I am going to, and if there are no further questions from trustees, open it up for public comment. Do we have members of the public to speak on this agenda item?
If there are members of the public who'd like to speak on Item E5, the adjusted trustee area map, please raise your hand at this time. And Gabriel Albevera would like to comment. Gabe, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Give you a quick second here. Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, obviously, being a member of San Rosa and being here in Sonoma County, I'm really excited with the way the, this was redrawn and I really appreciate the, the information. Obviously, not only being a member of San Rosa City Schools, but also as a parent. So I'm really appreciate the great work that everybody's done to make sure that, you know, all sides of San Rosa get, get a representative that's going to be representing their districts. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to the Board for further discussion. Now, all three maps, as we've seen, Mr. Foster presented to us, balance the trustee area boundaries. With that 10% population variance that is required by law, we have scenarios one, two, and three that we have been looking at. I see Trustee Medina's hand raised.
I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2021-2022-34 with the selection of map scenario three.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. So we have a motion. So we have a motion um, and seconded um, on adopting the resolution with scenario number three. I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
I was going to second that or make that motion and I would, I'm not sure why trustee Medina. Went for three, but I'm going for three, which actually says two on it. So let's make sure it's that last one, that third one, because it had the least variance.
Right, right. Okay, other board members? Okay, so we have um, motion from um. Um, trustee Medina seconded from trustee Flores. Uh, on approval of the resolution with uh, scenario three, map number three to move forward. Are we ready for a vote?
I'm not sure she's back, but director Beard.
Hi.
Thank you. Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Moneary.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right. Well, congratulations. We have approved a scenario. Thank you so much, Milton. It's great to see you again. Thank you for the weeks that you've been um, coming and visiting and, and, and sticking through our long meetings um, throughout this process. Um, I'm very pleased. Um, I, I, it looks like the, um, the board is pleased as well. Um, we have approval. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all. You all have a great evening.
Thank you. You as well. Wow, okay. So we are now on. Agenda item E six. Um, this is a discussion item. Local Control and Accountability Plan, uh, mid-year report. Tonight we'll have a mid-year report. Um, of the LCAP as required by Assembly Bill AB one thirty. Um, presenting this uh, discussion item. We have um, deputy superintendent Edson. We have uh, associate superintendent, uh, Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, and we have executive director Joel Dantas with us. Everybody's in the house. Okay, I am going to turn it over to you, deputy superintendent Edson.
Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board. Uh, I'm actually going to hand this over to Dr. Armstrong to start the presentation. Uh, and then uh, we'll follow with some financial information towards a lot of part of the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. Glad to be back with you all on this item. I am in the process of loading up the screen. So sorry as I move windows out of the way. Um, okay. Oh, wait, that's not the view I need. Sorry, one second. Let me try that again. There we go. I think that's it. Okay, so. Executive Director Dantos and I, along with um, deputy superintendent Edson is. We are here with the local control and accountability plan mid-year update as required by the state. The purpose of this presentation, there's um, really three things that we're going to do. It's going to be. A mid-year update on the three Santa Rosa City School LCAP goals. Um, and all available mid-year outcome data for the metrics and the expenditures. Uh, we're going to uh, review the five key elements in a supplement to the annual update for the twenty one twenty two LCAP. And um, also give a mid-year update on the twenty one twenty two budget overview for parents. So um, this LCAP is, update is um. From the sixty-eight actions that we have in our LCAP. Um, with approximately sixty-six point seven million. Um, it, financial impact overall. And so I'm going to present on the matrix and then executive director Dantos will talk about. The financial impact in the expenditures. So as you know, we adopted or the board um, took action on the LCAP. The update to the LCAP in the fall. And I just want to note that. And I know that I said this in the fall, but I just want to repeat it. That it's no longer a one-year LCAP and then there's revisions and now then there's time to approve a new LCAP. Uh, the revised LCAP, the new LCAP that uh, California has pushed out is that it's a three-year plan. And the update is in the mi- is mid-year. So by February twenty eighth is when we. Um, present the update on the matrix that we have available. And then by June, we do that end of year report and it's at that time that we can make changes going through a typical process. But the goal was to establish a three-year LCAP with matrix that would last over three years. So I just want to bring in that context. So I won't read the goals word for word. Hopefully you're familiar with them. Uh, but I will say for um, LCAP goal one, it was really focuses on student-centered teaching. And just the opportunity to um, lead towards equitable outcomes for students. And the matrix that we had that corresponds with that is sprinkled throughout uh, the presentation as you'll see. Um, there are the matrix on college and career readiness and the graduation rate. I just want to maybe explain a couple of things instead of just read each of them. So I know you all are prepared board and have probably already been through this information. And then I can always refer back if there's questions. Uh, but I do want to say that when the LCAP was originally developed, the three-year LCAP was originally developed in the spring. There were the um. Matrix that was set forth and so. The baseline data that was used in which we created our goals off of. Um, was based on whatever year that data was available. So if you're looking through the LCAP, you may see data points from eighteen nineteen or nineteen twenty. So if we had a baseline data mark for eighteen nineteen, then, um, and it's a year in, yeah, annual data mark. Then in the mid-year, we included the next data point for the matrix. It's also important to know that the expectation from the state is that we are updating on the matrix. Um, data points, right? So it's not a place for narratives. Um, and it's, you know, the smart goals, right? Where there are, they're focused on action and. Um, there is a um. Uh, quantitative part to it. So with that, I just want to note a cou- sorry. Sorry, note a couple of things. So for the college and career readiness graduation rate. Um, we put in last year's graduation rates, um, because that wasn't listed in the original LCAP. And then when we have the updated twenty twenty-two grad rate, we'll put that in there. So hopefully that makes sense as we go through this. Um, we also had matrix where we had corresponding numbers for the um, the atom out of Let's Go Learn and. The DORA and those are tests that are given three times a year. So we were able to pull a current data mark for that for the August to November and then the November to the middle of February. Um, and let's see, what else do I want to note on here? Um, you're able to see that we have some preliminary data around um. Just the students' access to a broad course of, of study. And, and I will say, when the team spent time looking through the matrix and looking for those mid-year data points. You know, we, we definitely landed in a place that um, we would love to be in collaboration with SRTA and families and community. Around uh, the revision of some metrics or even in addition to. Um, I think it's one thing to build this three-year LCAP for the first time and create metrics. And then when it's time to do that mid-year report, realize that there are some opportunities for us to be. Um, perhaps a little more innovative, um, uh, goals that are a little bit higher and a metric, matrix that are a little. Uh, a little more uh, attainable, if you will. So goal two, when it uh, with the focus on programs and relationships and that. Um, safe supportive environment, we had uh. Matrix around absenteeism, the attendance rate, there are some things on there about. Um, behavior, students being included in classes. And then um, an increase on the youth truth survey family portion. Um, so. Again, like I said, just as you go through this or if you go through it again, just pay attention to the years and. The explanation to why there may be a nineteen twenty or a twenty twenty-one or even a, a twenty twenty-two. We were able to put current youth truth data as uh, we just received the results of youth truth last week. And so that was exciting. Okay, and then lastly, I just wanted to talk about goal three. Uh, which is about the support that we provide to our Santa Rosa City School staff. And with the, with the goal of not only improving their skill and strategy, but then also impacting the learning environment. And we did not have many matrix around that area. Um, and the two that we have properly credentialed teachers, that's at ninety-seven percent per human resources. As of February, and then um, we have a goal in there or a matrix in there around. Professional development surveys at the end of each session and on our January twenty-seventh. District-wide professional development day, we were able to um, deploy a survey to collect relevant feedback and then. Um, here are the thoughts and wishes of set staff and it's not just certificated, but classified as well. And so with that, I'll turn it over to executive director Dantos to walk through the expenditures part.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Kimberly, President Sheffield, superintendent Trinell, members of board, thank you for having me tonight. Um, Dr. Armstrong went over the, the um, matrix that we measure our LCAP against and. In support of those matrix, the LCAP, um, we have a robust LCAP that includes. Uh, three goals that Dr. Armstrong went over and there are sixty-eight actions associated with those goals. Um, can you go to the next slide, please? So here are. So this is the first time um, since the LCAP was um. Uh, rolled out in thirteen fourteen that we are having a mid-year um, update. I think uh, as we finish this presentation, there'll be some understanding of why the uh, state has. You know, brought forth this new mid-year LCAP to present. Um. So, oh, can you go back to that last slide?
Oh, sorry.
So, 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 so with that, we're seeing uh, our original LCAP, uh, the sixty-eight actions. It had a total investment of nineteen point four million dollars. Uh, when you, you know, when you sum up all the sixty-eight actions. To date, uh, we've accounted for fourteen point seven million in expenditures and encumbrances. Encumbrances are commitments, uh, writing purchase orders, uh. Uh, salaries, for example, we've spent, uh, you know, however far we're through the year, but we know we've committed. To the rest of those costs. Now, if for some reason that employee leaves and there's a vacancy, those numbers will change, but this is our mid-year update. And you can see, uh, we have a remaining balance of about four point seven million dollars. So we've spent about seventy-six percent of the LCAP um, budget.
Uh, Director Dantas, I'm sorry, can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So I mean, if this is the mid-year report, right? So um, and we've already spent seventy-six percent and we still have, you know, the rest of the year to go. How, how are we going to make uh, well, how are we going to pay for the rest of it?
So that's a, so. That we haven't actually spent.
Oh, okay.
So we've committed, these are committed costs. So these are expenditures and encumbrances. So, so. This is, this includes like positions, the rest of the year salaries. If we've got uh, purchase orders that we um, are. That we've got invoices for, but maybe some of the purchase orders for materials or goods or services still have invoices to come. Goods and services, we've committed those costs through our purchasing um. Control system, um, all those costs are accounted for.
Okay.
Four point seven million. Includes um, budgets for um, supplemental pay, like extra duty overtime. We don't. Incumber those in our financial system. We collect uh, monthly time parts that are paid and. So you're not going to see an encumbrances in there and uh, we'll go through some of those actions, but so we do have um. We are on budget to meet the LCAP. Um, we'll go through some line items. Um, and then there are some, as I close out the report on the financials, we'll show some areas where. There might be some um. Room for some carryover, but we do want to be mindful that we have to, you know, carryover, we'll have to find services to move into these expenses. Um, through the, as we close this year out, but um, that's a great question. And uh, hopefully I'll clarify that more as we go through the slides.
Right. It's just, it's just a little bit confusing because it says expenditures, right? So my, my assumption is that this has already been expensed. So.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, so, so um. Yeah, I think the, the goal was to show the, the most accurate projections through the end of the year at our mid-year point. So we, we did elect to include encumbrances that are committed costs. Um. I don't have a good. Number on how to show which is encumbrances and expenditures right now. But uh, maybe that's something I can provide supplementary to follow up, but I mean. Um, we are projecting spending right now and, and we do have a. A um. Uh, in, you know, a vision to spend that remaining four point seven million dollar balance as well. Um, and, and I'll go through these and hopefully that'll clear some of this up. So if you go to the next slide, Kimberly. So these, we've listed all the goals. All the actions in each goal and gave a mid-year update uh, with the detail of that summary slide we just went over. Um, there are some actions that show zero current expense. That is true. Um, like for example, action two. So this is a language accelerator view committee. Um, this is. A budget that we put aside for funding for um. Supplemental pay for uh, sole counselors, teachers, Yale specialists, family engagement facilities. To inside administrators to create a, a committee to review this material and uh, to this year, we haven't. Um, implemented that action yet. Now we've had a heavy lift this year. There's been a lot happening. Um, there's good chance there's. That's on the agenda to, to um, perform, but along with some of these zeros. There are some actions that have gone over budget. So um, I know the educational services has been using some available balances and some actions to cover some overbalances and other actions. We do have to have a balanced budget with this LCAP. Um, again. If you go to the next slide. So, so this, so, so go back to that slide. So each of these, each of these are the mid-year update. I. I don't, I think a good amount of them are on track. I, if you have specific questions about any of them, I'd be happy to elaborate. But if you go to the next slide, slide number twelve, here's another one with. A zero, uh, action number twelve, here's another one, the zero current balance. That is a math redesign. That's money available. For uh, teachers to engage in professional development. I think that is something that is on the agenda, but with. The current year, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, so this, this is my, this is why I'm a little bit confused because if you look at item, and this is part of my notes over here. Like item eighteen and nineteen, for example, right? So uh, let's look at um, TOSA, right? Teacher's Special Assignments. Uh, we, we allocated one point, you know, one million dollars. And it looks like we've already, at this point in time, it looks like we've already spent most of it.
I mean, yeah, so. Those, those are positions.
Ri- right, that, that, that had been, you know, uh, you know, chugging along and, and, and this is the actual amount that we spent it till now. And then we only have, oh, you moved the uh, and we only have. Uh, forty-two thousand dollars left, which means. Forty two thousand dollars left, which means we, we will go over budget, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. Right, because we didn't budget enough money for that line item.
No, they're just, if I may add, again, ever. It's what's been spent and what's expected to be spent through the end of the year, so it's not just what's been spent.
Yeah, so that is, so that is a midyear update through projections. Through the end of the year, and that is all the positions, so at the end of the year, that specific action will have a remaining of. Balance, because when we, when we created the LCAP, we. Use projections budgets, so we didn't have all that. Position control updated with current salaries, current year payroll taxes, so we made it. Educated estimate. Using projections and now that is the actual year's costs compared to the budget and the ending bound and, and, and the. Current balance.
Okay, so Kimberly, I'm Dr. Armstrong, if you can go back to the previous slide, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just confusing. You know, because it says the LCAP midyear update remaining balance, right, of line item, for example, eighteen and nineteen. We only have forty two thousand dollars left in that line item nineteen. As of the midyear updating balance, okay, so it, it doesn't sound like we're. You're, you're in the wrong slide, line item, line item eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
Yes.
Sorry. Where, there we.
There, there, there we go, so I mean, if, if you look at this and, and I'm looking at positions, right, because that's. Kind of easy to follow because you pay employees monthly and these are not projected sort of. Monies, so I'm a little bit confused that, you know, we've allocated this amount of money and, and at the midyear. Up to remaining balance, we only have forty two thousand dollars left as of today, right, or as of February. So, so my question is, are we going to go over budget, I mean, your answer is no, because this is what we've allocated for the entire year, but that's not what this slide is telling me. I mean, I just, I'm just confused, I don't know if I'm reading this completely, you know, wrong or, or whatnot, because these are projected, these are not projected costs.
So, hold on a second, so Director Flores, I, I think if, if there was. Two words added to this column that said. Incumbrance and expenditures.
Okay, okay, that, that, yes, 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 okay.
And then based on the encumbrance and expenditure, excuse me, we. Anticipate having forty two thousand dollars left to feed.
Okay.
At the end of the year.
Got it, okay, that makes sense, I think.
That would hold true for all the goals if we, just think of that as encumbrance and expenditure.
Okay, got it, got it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, no, I appreciate the speaking out, as this is the first year, you know, we, we could take an opportunity to learn and improve this. I certainly want to give the information. Yeah, so this. Number eighteen is a good example, so. We've actually had. A challenges filling the coast of position, so that seventy nine is, is, is a good amount due to some of that vacancy. Through the end of the year.
Yes, you know, you have a couple of board members who want to speak like Omar and Director De La Cruz.
Oh, yeah, please. I don't know who had their hand first, but.
Trustee Medina's hands raised first.
Yeah, so, um, I think, and, and I don't know if these are questions necessarily for you, Joel, but it could be for a superintendent or other staff. Throughout, there's a lot of negative, negative figures. Which I imagine they're going to be subtracted from other budgeted items in terms of what the budget is. But we have any information on what, what. What might be cut or which expenses that have.
Well, so that is something that, that, so the educational service department, they certainly keep notes and they. Have areas where they feel that, you know, they prioritize areas and some of that zero expense is anticipating. If we need to not perform those, then they would be available, but we're also tracking areas like you'll see tonight. In the following fiscal stabilization plan, some of these. Some of those actions will change this as well, if those are elected to, if that FSP is, is approved.
And. And my other question, this goes down to like number four on, on goal three. The two director positions, it seems like there's a huge discrepancy there, and I think it was budgeted around one eighty six, and I think it's like one seventy one over. I'm just wondering like what could have caused such a discrepancy in what was budgeted and what's been.
Yeah, let me go, let me get you that detail, goal three.
Number four.
Yeah, and what I'll, if, if you, while you're looking that up. Joel, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in and say that, you know. Like with anything, when we set up the LCAP and we did some estimates of what some particular. Things would cost and what the expenditures may be, we were like you do with financial planning. Putting forth our, our best educated guest based on the information we had, like how much positions cost. And then the different needs and, and costs that we've. Spent in, in previous years, and so. When Executive Director Dantos mentioned that we would. Have to then maybe move some funds around to make sure that it's balanced, it's basically just, if you think of it as buckets, we're moving. Funds from. One bucket to another, still all focused on the same goal, and then that information will be used. For updating our actions in June so that we. Make sure that our funds are distributed the way that they need to be distributed to cover the costs. If you will, and so it, it. Might be a little difficult to drill down on a particular item that's. That's negative without unpacking all the other things that may come with it. And then also realizing that, you know, we had some positions where there were shortages, we've had, you know, some costs. That has increased based on need as we're, you know, in real time supporting our. Our learners who are, who have the most need.
But I'm sorry, I think just, just following up on, on that question about the, the two director positions.
Yeah, so that is, that is, that is a good, good. Action to address, so. We have identified the two directors in that specific action. And their fully burdened salaries for this year. Based on the current. Your salary schedule is three hundred and sixty seven nine thirteen. Now. The one ninety six was the budget. It is not, it is not. It is. It is. I would say material diff- materially different from the actuals. I think. Through the development of this new LCAP, I think there was, when the new action was created, there was some. Transfer information from the old LCAP and I think. I mean, I have, I, I think there was, we increased that director to. Increase that FTE in this action, and I don't think the LCAP budget got updated, but now the midyear update. Allows that to be trued up, and yes, we have to. Use this information to now balance the budget.
Right, because that includes benefits and not just salary, right, so.
It's a fully burden, yes.
Yeah, and, and then I think, you know, just, I think whenever budgeting for that, those things, I think it's just standard to be included, so I think there's definitely a big. Miss, misjudgment in, in that budgeting. So I wasn't sure if, if that budgeting was just like the salaries and benefits, or if there was other things that were built into it that weren't anticipated, but it sounds like it was just, but.
That is only what the LCAP stated, two directors, their salaries and, and benefits.
And, and I'm just concerned about like, what of the other programs were budgeted, what, what the adverse.
Well, I can tell you the VAPA ended up buying materials, they. They invested in materials, some of the other. I can go through. Yeah, the VAPA. Bought some materials, that's goal one, action ten. Then the two director positions, that was certainly. A material difference. Then the K through the music positions, the, the music teachers. They, there was some actual. That's a goal three, action eighteen, there was a material difference there that we have. That we identified in this midyear update.
And I certainly agree with Executive Director Dantos in terms of just being able to. Get the, the dollars adjusted, but I, but I also want to note that that's part of. The LCAP midyear plan is to report out so that in June. When we are ready to roll into year two of the LCAP and we present to you all in June. We will have adjusted and will be prepared for twenty two, twenty three. And I think that no matter what we do, there will be some different fluctuations as we, or it'll fluctuate. As, as we go through the plan, I mean, I, I think that's the biggest one, but just. Omar, or Director, Trustee Medina, did that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'll just add one more, just because clarification, then I'll let other board members chime in, just for example, number eight, they're also on goal three, Learning House, it's like four thousand zero spent, but. I know there's Learning House, is that being spent differently, why is that zero or, or?
So that is.
So that, if you were to go to the actual document, and I know I, I put an attachment on for the September document, that. So this is, just think of this as our summary, that amount was for specific items. Whether it be materials or field trips or whatever is listed in the LCAP for that item. That should, that doesn't necessarily represent the totality of the Learning House budget, but I think if you go back to, if you compare this to. Action, goal three, action eight, you'll be able to see more text around that, that may fill in some of the. Or answer some of the questions that you have.
Yeah, so that was set aside for professional development, project-based learning. And support to build flexible learning environments and learning house, and release time for collaboration if needed. Yeah, so that was just some extra services for Learning House that has not four thousand dollars. That, and it was also. Listed as not contributing. Towards our student subgroup, English learner, foster youth and. And economic disadvantage.
Which might be a whole nother. Conversation, or it goes back to the fall when we talked about the allocation of funds and if it's contributing to a certain subgroup or. If it's directly impacting, and so that level of detail isn't included in the midyear report, but I do appreciate the questions that you all are asking because. I think Executive Director Dantos and I can make those notes so that when we bring forth. The, the final year update, we'll make sure that it, you can see. How it corresponds with the original LCAP that gives you more text and more information. So I'm wondering, I see that we have trustee De La Cruz and then trustee Fang. Are you okay with me moving to them, Executive Director? Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you, I was gonna go back with a couple of questions on Dr. Armstrong, you're part of the presentation there. I guess one of the things that I'm curious about is being able to look at comparisons from. You know, last midyear to this midyear or from midyear to. To when we first kind of set LCAP goals and understand if we're. In the positive, in the neutral, or in the negative on each of those goals, and I would love to see. How that is laid out so that we can be very clear about where do we need to put. Resources and intention as we move forward, especially given just how critical. Needs are right now, so I don't really see anything besides the raw data like that allows us to do some of that more. Specific comparison and to see, to hold ourselves accountable, right? And I feel like accountability is so, is so critical, I think it gets a lot clearer when we get to the. To the, to the budget side, so if you don't mind going forward a couple of slides. And this is where accountability is so critical to me, because I'm looking at a number of the areas that are zeros. And it's like manipulatives to support student learning, college ready. Like where we're significantly under budget, English learner curriculum, what I'm really worried about and what I want to see in place is. You know, don't gut the things that still have money in them. Because you haven't figured out how to spend on the most like. You know, on, on the biggest need, on the areas where our outcomes right now, what they're looking at, that's where we should be directing our need and not just on moving. From one bucket to another, because we have a deficit. Because systems are structured to do exactly what they're designed to do, right, and. If the system is designed to just move a bucket because you're trying to fill a gap. It's usually the places where people like really need the help to get the money and spend the money. That the money needs to stay and we actually need to do a better job of getting the money into those places rather than just moving it out because they haven't figured out how to use it. So I, I'm really curious on. You know, about how are we using the metrics that we set to create accountability? And that's what drives these decisions about how we spend our money for the rest of this year.
Sure, thank you for that, I can answer both of those questions, so the first one. For comparison data, you would refer back to the fall revised LCAP, I think it's September eighth. If you were to pull that LCAP up and you look at the matrix, you'll see baseline, it'll give you the matrix, it'll give you the. What the matrix is, it'll give you the baseline data that we have available, and then you'll see what our. Goal is after three years, and then there's like three empty columns for. Midyear one update, midyear update for year two, and then midyear for three. So when we did midyear one, we based our, or we looked at the data from the baseline. To make conclusions about how well we were performing or areas where. We needed to, to improve, so that's the comparative data, and so next year's midyear. Will then have not only the baseline, but will have the midyear one data. To, to look at too, and, and it is something, it is information that we're using in. In ed services to make decisions, we're just now getting to the part of unpacking youth truth and. We'll be able to go a little further with that, with the county collaborative, but on some of the other areas and. That has assessment information and even some areas that we don't have a, a data point yet for midyear. We're still having, it's all part of our continuous improvement plan. And then I would just say, going back to this financial part, I just want to emphasize that. While it may look like zero dollars, well, it says zero dollar spend on LCAP action number six for. For example, math manipulatives or hands-on manipulatives to support student learning, that doesn't necessarily mean that there were no manipulatives purchased across the district. Right, so. Like I said, I would just encourage you to, to refer back to the LCAP and, and we'll make a point to make sure we pull out more data for the.
I think, I think that, that side by side, right, that kind of like. Holding ourselves accountable in a transparent way and not making folks go dig back in old board items. That, right, to really help us also be clear around. You know, how are we doing on our goals, how are we hitting those things and being able to look at the side by side? To make those kinds of comparisons really also helps, I think, us. Be focused in, in particular places where there. Where that, where there, you know, that's the biggest need identified because we're looking at the side by side, and that's what's driving our decision-making, so I would just, I. Yeah, I think, I think that, that would just be really helpful to help. Help this board make sure that we are directing resources and providing, you know, any additional need to. To prioritize or to allocate additional resources if there are, are challenges here, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Again, I'm looking at like where zero is spent, at least on LCAP. Funds, I get, I get like the larger budget questions, but like math redesign, avid growth. I get, I get like the larger budget questions, but like math redesign, avid growth, you know, modality resources for students with reading deficits. These are places where it is actually concerning to me that we have no, no resources spent here, when we're just looking at the line items and that, you know, and recognizing the kids that sit in those line items. So, yeah, I'd, I'd love to, you know, as we look at the year end, really provide that ability for us to hold ourselves accountable to our goals.
Absolutely, we'll make that modification for June. Thank you.
Trustee Deva Cruz, it looks like trustee Fong's hand is raised.
It is, thank you. I appreciate the work that you've put into this, and I appreciate that this is a brand-new report. And I also appreciate that you came on to the job, Superintendent Tronell, and you also, Dr. Armstrong, came on to the job, kind of just recently, right, July? So this is kind of like almost mid-year for you guys too. So the LCAP is very, very important to us, super important, because it really is the how to the what that the board is putting forward in policy. And in terms of the dollars, the dollars, they don't really measure the effectiveness of what we're trying to do. They don't measure the effectiveness. It's how much money we spent on something. What I'm still looking for is how do we know how effective these things are? How do we know that? And so you, there is a slide on some Adam and Dora data, and I just have a question about that. Beginning of the year testing Adam, we tested a thousand four hundred ninety-seven students. And it, you show the proficiency.
Or are you going back to my matrix? Is that, okay?
Yeah, I'm going back to LCAP goal one.
Okay, sorry.
Anyway, the question was, we tested a lot fewer kids on the mid-test. Do you know that? Why is that? But I'm sure students.
Well, there are, some students may not be included in this, there's absenteeism, and there's also still some reports that we're getting back. We pulled what we had available as of last week, so that we can present this. I suspect that there'll be more data sets coming in that we'll need to update. So we'll have, I suspect this will be a lar- a higher number when we get to the third data point in the spring. And we have the update for you in June.
That makes, that makes total sense. But I guess my overarching question really is, the dollars spent do not represent how effective the initiatives are. How do we know how effective these initiatives are? That is my question, and that's what I want to see on the LCAP report. Because if they're not effective, then we're, should not be spending those dollars anymore, or we should be redirecting them. So that is what the board needs to know in terms of, is the how working to the what we need? And perhaps that is what is going to be in the final LCAP report.
Yeah, that's more of the June report. I think when I opened saying that the structure for this, which is why it's a, our discussion item and not necessarily an action item, is that we are reporting on quantitative data points that are, that correspond with the matrix that we listed, and then showing the expenditures to the mid-year part, and then June will be more comprehensive. And it's helpful hearing the questions and the feedback, and so the team and I will make sure that we create more of a, a crosswalk, so that you're able to see it as a snapshot, as opposed to multiple reports.
I have a question, I'm sorry, Omar, I have a question on this slide, is that okay if I ask? So, and I forgot to ask this earlier, so, and, and this goes in tandem with what Director Fong mentioned. Like, the graduation requirements, for example, is seventy-seven point nine percent for last year, right? That's what you said earlier. That's not including the, the, the AB one oh four reduction or credits that was introduced, right? So, you know, as a, as a matrix, I, I would love to see, you know, because we, those are Ezra funds that we're using. How are we using those funds to make sure that we improve those graduation rates, you know, even for those kids that already left, because that's what AB one oh four, AB one oh four had mentioned, that we could have reached out to kids that, you know, weren't able to graduate, right? And we're spending money in, in counseling services and, and services to make sure that we improve that. I mean, that's, that's a prime example that I would love to see that we improve that graduation rate somehow, by making sure that, you know, students are reached out. You know, because they might have missed like a couple of classes here and there, and with the reduction or credits to state minimum, you know, that, that could have been improved. So I mean, that just goes in tandem with what Director Fong just said. So I would love to see that information.
No, and I appreciate that, and I just want to maybe restate something that I said in the very beginning, which is that the matrix that was developed in the spring and, and brought before you and our, our public back in June, and then we did the revisions, which were mainly on the financial part, to meet the requirement. We definitely identified as, as we go through this mid-year, not necessarily comprehensive of all the different things that we're doing and that we want to be measured on. And so we'll have that opportunity in June to bring forth and add different matrix. We're, we're working with a document that was established with community input back in the spring. And so we are looking for, to the opportunity to make some improvements to the matrix area.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Medina?
Thank you. First, I wanted to reemphasize Director Leccoz's point on accountability, and also just including a previous metric that I think that's really important. I think one thing that I feel is important about this is to remember that this isn't just a tool for us, but it's also for the public. And so making it as simple to understand, especially those metrics to see if we're actually improving, I think will be critical. But along those lines, in terms of like future adjustments or development of future LCAPs, are you able to share like the timeline and in terms of like when people are able to engage and, and start participating in the process of, of developing the next LCAP, and because I know you, you mentioned it's a three-year, a three-year process now.
Yeah, so the next LCAP, the full development will be during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, where it's an opportunity to do new goals and bring forth new matrix. We do have the opportunity though, every June, to revise or add to our document, provided we involve stakeholders and it's then approved. So, like I said, with a matrix, there are definitely some that we will need to adjust, that we will be with our community. We have a district advisory committee meeting this week, and so LCAP is a standing agenda item with that group. And then the plan is to reach out to SRTA membership and other partners, so that we can dig a little deeper on some things that we've noted when going through the mid-year are misfits and, or missing, and we want to add to properly reflect the work that we've been engaged in this year.
Thank you.
No problem. So I, I, I'm not sure where you were at, Executive Director Dantos, or what's remaining?
So, so, can you? I think we made it through the actions in the mid-year update on expenditures, or projections. If there are no other questions, I think we can move on to, can, can you go to this, this slide? So.
Okay, before we continue, don't, can, I, I'm just doing a time check, I'm looking at it's, it's, it's almost quarter to ten. And so I'm looking to the board for a possible extension of tonight's meeting.
I moved to extend the meeting until eleven, is that, you guys feel okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, let's just see, show of hands.
I second that, by the way.
Second that, okay, show of hands.
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, seeing, seeing approval, we will extend the meeting until eleven. I'm sorry, Mr. Dantos, you want to continue, please?
Yeah, thank you. So the LCAP had a couple of agenda points, they want to do the mid-year update on the LCAP. Then they wanted to do the supplement to the LCAP. And the supplement is, so we adopted our LCAP last June, we did do an update, I think in September. Post those timeframes, the two thousand twenty-one Budget Act included a number of different grants that were special dollars for special student, or for, for extra services for students for, then, we also had federal money that we allocated a plan for in October. And there was also the additional concentration grant to the LCAP. All those were subsequent to the LCAP. If we knew about those prior to the LCAP, we would have had the opportunity to include them in our LCAP. So these five areas that we're going to go over under the supplemental portion of this presentation, review those areas and kind of give a history of what we've done there and how they relate to LCAP. So can you go to the first element? The first element is the Budget Act of twenty-one. What grants did we get? How do we utilize of grants? And how did we have engagement with our educational partners? And how do we plan to have engagement with our educational partners? So, so we had a number of different grants. I listed the grants, I think, that were, you know, a robust list here. So the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, if you recall, we adopted that, that plan for this, that was our summer school, Dr. Armstrong's team adopted that. The total, I, I think it's through the next three years. We have some summer school programs, it was about ten and a half million dollars, the overall grant. Parents and teachers were involved in the development of this plan. We had an agenda item on a DAC and DILAC meeting. We had a, I don't know if you recall, but on April twenty-eighth, two thousand one, Dr. Armstrong's team did a presentation on the summer school programs. We executed some MOUs with our bargaining units, we had an in-house department meeting, and it was also discussed with the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, and we are performing that grant and the plans associated with that. We also have an Educated Effectiveness Grant, you'll see that coming out, we are in the midst of that community engagement, and no, I'm sorry, let me, that, I'm jumping forward to the A through G, let me go back to Educated Effectiveness Grant. If you recall, we adopted our Educated Effectiveness Grant Plan already on December eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and, and, and we, so that was our, our, how we had used that grant. Then we have a, a new grant that was included this year, the A through G Completion Improvement Grant. You will see that plan coming to the board in a public hearing and adoption next month. And then if you go onto the next slide, we had our in-person instruction grant. So there was a, a lot of public input on these grants. I don't know if you recall, this was money when we were in, when we were in our distance learning, we were preparing for a hybrid in-person instruction, and we ended up our elementary's came back April first and second, our high schools came back April twenty-sixth. In all those board meetings, leading up to how we're going to come back to hybrid, this grant was referred to, we had multiple MOUs that issued the expenditure areas for these grants, and we had a comprehensive safer return to school plan surrounding the areas this grant would fund. Then we have this year, in this budget, we also have our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. The development of this plan is underway, and it will include engagement with our stakeholders and a board plan, a board plan for this will be, need to be adopted by the board as well. So if you can go on to the next slide, we have our two thousand twenty-one Universal Pre-Kin kindergarten Planning Implementation Grant, three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Before June thirty, two thousand twenty-two, we have to have a, a public meeting and board adoptionist, and development of this plan will include engagement with our stakeholders and educational partners on these, these funds. We have a learning recovery supports for students with disabilities, one point five million dollars. Our Student Services Department created a plan that was developed with collaboration of our SELPA and our Special Education Professionals, who engage with the Special Education Community, and this plan was included in the October twenty-seventh, two thousand one board meeting as an information item. And additionally, we had a dispute prevention resolution for Special Education Grant, two hundred seventy-one thousand. This plan was developed with the collaboration of our SELPA and our Special Education Professionals, who engage with Special Ed Community, Special Education Community. So that was the list of the two thousand twenty-one Budget Act items, and, and and the element number one of the supplement. So element number two of the supplement is our concentration grant funds out of our LCFF increased by fifteen percent with the Budget Act. They were at fifty percent in the projections, and when the act was passed, they increased to sixty-five percent. The additional fifty percent, we, we used the increased number of credential to classified staff who direct, who provide direct service to pupils. This is by comparing prior year staff, few visuals with greater than fifty-five percent unduplicated pupil count versus schools with less than fifty-five percent unduplicated pupil count. Then, we have, then moving on to the federal one-time funds, which is our SR three funds for this, for this year, we passed the, this plan at the, we passed our SR three plan at a board meeting, I want to say October thirteenth. And we had community engagement input from, so, so this, this slide said, is just saying the engagement we had for these SR three funds. So we had two community forums, one conducted in English and other in Spanish. We had a Google form in English and Spanish to gather feedback in writing. We had public comment during the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one board meeting, where we also presented the details of the SR three plan. Then we, then we ended up adopting this plan in the subsequent board meeting after we had public, I, no, I, I think we had public comment, and I think we adopted the plan October thirteenth as well, and, but we did discuss this plan with the Budget Advisor came out October twenty-first as well, and then I think I left off the bullet on when we actually adopted this plan. It was after the October thirteenth and October meeting, and then the October twenty-first board meeting. So we did adopt this in, I think, the, the last meeting in October. And then this slide goes into the details of how we're using the SR three funds. So again, here we go, this information was, so, so I, I included the actual adoption of the plan on this slide that was at the October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one board meeting. So if you recall, in summary, these funds were twenty-two million. Total funds allocated in the plan for strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning was eight point five million. Total funds allocated in the plan for addressing learn, loss instructional time, a little over thirteen million. Total funds allocated in the plan for use of any remaining funds about almost five, about four hundred fifty, a little more than four hundred fifty thousand, and that was the, the summary of the areas that the twenty, twenty-two million dollar, we invested these twenty-two million dollars of SR three expenditures. So those were the areas of these new dollars that came out. And hopefully that was a good summary and information of how we utilize those dollars, how we engage with the community and Santa Rosa City Schools' vision with these dollars. They align with the LCAP. So again, if we knew about these dollars before, we would have included them as investments in our LCAP. Their extra services for students to increase the achievement. And now that we've addressed those, these extra services shown in the LCAP are now our comprehensive goals, planned actions, and leverage resources to meet those goals to improve student outcomes. And now these are aligned to this objective. So that is the supplement presentation to the LCAP. And the next component of this LCAP mid-year update is an update to the budget overview for parents. So with the, with the adoption of our original budget in LCAP, we were required to have a budget overview for parents that showed the major categories in our, the major summary categories in our budget. And you can see as we adopted the budget, our current updated budget, as it's shown in our Escape Financial Management System, is increased by about 7.7 million dollars. We don't have all the SR3 and state budget items budgeted in our financial system because they're multi-year plans. And, but, but currently, this is the increase to our, our budget in Escape for a current year and an update to our budget overview for parents. So with that, that was a lot of information. If anybody wants to go over any questions, I, I, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Do we have other questions? I know we, we fired some questions at you as we went through the presentation. I'm looking at the board for further questions before we go into public comment. Okay, seeing none, can open it up and see if we have members of the public who want to speak to this discussion item.
If anybody would like to comment on item E6, please raise your hand at this time. And Jill Jackson would like to comment. Jill, are you there?
Here I am. I needed to unmute, I'm sorry. I would like to see reflected in the SR funds. I did try to include this in a survey that I received as an educator. I'd like to see some flexibility in the use of some of those SR funds to to be allocated toward reading intervention, particularly since the SR funds are to be used for learning loss during distance learning. I'd like to see some expansion of the usual opportunities we offer to students for summer school and after-school tutorial to include reading intervention. We have those children at school. We're not having to convince parents or arrange transportation for after-school or summer school. I did, as I said, I did try to provide my input at that time, but I'd like to see an expansion perhaps at some sites for them to adopt this as an alternative or a supplement to what's already been outlined.
Thank you. Next is John Smith.
Hello, I just have, I guess, two questions and not really any comments. One is about the SR3 addressing, or addressing learning loss or whatever that was, that 13.2 million dollars. I was just hoping to know whether or not we'll have, if the public will have any opportunity for future input on those funds. And then the other question was, I noticed the, there was a significant change in expenditures and revenues. And it looks like we are not going to have to spend down our general fund balance. Is that correct? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another hand raised for public comments. Sarah Ponsford.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ponsford, and I am Chair of the Sonoma County CAC. We're a group of parents, teachers and educators, administrators that all work together for our students with disabilities. I'm also a Santa Rosa City Schools' parent with a daughter with a disability. And I just wanted to mention that in the, in the goals, there's a mid-year update that talks about the percentage of students in the general education classroom. And I'm thrilled to see that goal as part of the plan. But I do, I do want to point out that just putting a student with a disability in a classroom, in a general ed classroom without the proper supports and systems to support them, isn't, isn't actually inclusion. And a lot of times we do that, and then we say, well, we tried it and it didn't work. So I just would love to see with that goal a little more information about what's happening to make that successful. And then I also wanted to point out that there is also a goal to reduce the over-identification of English learners in special education. And if we do have classrooms with those supports and systems in place, then we can also meet those same needs. So I just really thank you for the presentation and all the information and hope that we keep considering these things as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Great, thank you. I am going to bring it back to the board for further discussion or even additional questions that we might have.
President Sheffield, may I just comment that the LCAP mid-year update for the charters are included on the board item for later review.
Thank you. Board members, other questions? Just want to say that this media report is a huge undertaking. And so thank you for the presentation, Dr. Armstrong and Mr. Dantos. We've heard from members of the board with requests for more details for the upcoming report. We move down the road, a lot of the, how we're using funds and what we're getting for the allocations. I, I, I like the readability of this report, but there are, you know, a lot of questions. We just have that, you know, it, we, we're going to need to take the time to, to have a, 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 a bigger presentation. I know this was a discussion item, but you know, that, that, that we can see answers to these questions in front of us. We, we're not having to dig for them. Other board members, anything else to add? Superintendent Trunell?
Thank you. No other board members. I didn't want to interrupt the flow. But I certainly do want to first just thank Dr. Armstrong and Executive Director Dantos for this work. I want to also just recognize the feedback that the board has provided. It really helps us to retool our thinking and understand what is expected going forward. And really appreciate those suggestions. I agree that we don't want board members to have to go back in time and look for things on your own. That's what we're here to do, is to provide that information and help it to make sense as we move forward. I think it was mentioned before, but this is a new expectation as a part of the LCAP process. And even though we are not necessarily tasked with new revisions for another year or so, we will constantly ask for feedback from our community, especially through different groups that we hold meetings with, like our DLEC and our DAC committees. And we will continue to, if we didn't, in this opportunity, we will ask for opportunities to collaborate with our labor groups to ensure that we are on the same page. As we saw several zeros in the report, I can understand some of the confusion that may have come from the way that numbers were represented. We completely get that. I will say that when this, when this report or this LCAP was designed, it was through the midst of last year in COVID. And at the same time that we were trying to return to hybrid, so we may not have had as much feedback as we would have liked and went with feedback that we did receive. The thing that I'll press upon my team, all those who are present in our community, is that when we do this going forward, we don't want to shoot in the dark and put things into our LCAP that we hope may happen. We need a plan when we move forward with items in our LCAP so that we can move forward with the accountability metrics that we know is the right thing to do. It is the way that we will gather data so that we can assess how things are going. So I think there is a lot for us to learn through this process. And I know it's tough work, but we will definitely bring forward additional and clearer information to the board later this school year, and very much appreciate your transparency with us to assist us in that process.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell. You know, I, I agree. I think we should need to keep this sort of feedback loop moving, churning, you know? And if we have to, we can just extract feedback if possible. Trustee Flores, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Superintendent Trunell, for acknowledging that, you know, this was discussed before. Because I think we brought this, I brought this idea up a while back in terms of the budget, right? You know, showing project versus actuals from years past. I just want to say thank you for, you know, not forgetting that. And, and instituting that sort of idea into the LCAP will be beautiful just to make it life a little bit easier. Because, you know, I do go back into other board meetings, and it's very, 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 very time-consuming to, to do the comparisons. And I just want to say thank you, because I know it's a lot of work that you're all, all doing. And I just want to say, it doesn't go unnoticed, because, you know, I spent hours trying to like, take those, that information or take that information out. So it doesn't, it's not unnoticed. So thank you, thank you for doing that.
And trustee Medina?
Yeah, I want to reemphasize the gratitude again, a lot of work going into it. And I just also want to reemphasize that, you know, I think it was 2013 when this process started, the LCAP, and it's been changing. And, and I think we still haven't perfected the process, and we're still learning. And I think the fact that we're still learning and improving with all the changes, I think is positive, and we just got to keep moving forward. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Others? All right.
Joining in the thanks, the hard work of the kind of like building the plane while flying it, which literally is an analogy that I'm so sick of, I can't stand it. But I, I, it, it's still always apt. So just super grateful and looking forward to, you know, to again, like, we really want to be held accountable to these decisions. And I think that's, that's the invitation, is to help us do that. So thank, thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dela Cruz. All right, we are going to move on. Thank you again, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you again, Mr. Dantos. Actually, I think, Joel, you're sticking around for the next item. As we move forward with agenda item E7, this is an action item approval of the 2122 Fiscal Stabilization Plan. The board will consider approval of the superintendent's recommendations for revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions for the fiscal stabilization plan. We have presenting for this agenda item, we have Deputy Superintendent Edson and Executive Director Dantos. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board. I'm just going to get right into the presentation tonight on the fiscal stabilization plan and go over a few key points. Make sure I have the right window. So going straight into the presentation, we are at that point of the year where we're preparing for the second interim report, which will be brought forward at our next board meeting. As part of, and we'll go through some of this in a moment, what transpired through first interim required us to have a board-approved fiscal stabilization plan that we'll talk about tonight. As you can see from the same graphic we use, we are preparing for the green multi-point star of second interim. The items that we discussed tonight, for consideration of approval, will be included in full or in part in the second interim report that'll come back at the first meeting in March. This is just an overview that I'm going to go through quickly, because this is all familiar to many of us. But we are required to report on the first and second interim reporting periods on an annual basis, along with self-certification, which is either approved by the county or asked to be modified before being passed on to the California Department of Education. Actually, I thought there was another slide in there. This slide here is the assumptions that we used in our first interim report that was presented at our December meeting as part of our certification during that phase of the fiscal year, showing approximately 2.3, 10.3, and 10.3 million in the current and to out years of our budget. This is the multi-year projection from December. Just as a refresher, if we look quickly at the two line items in red, showing identified fiscal stabilization measures that were used as part of first interim for '22, '23, and '23, '24, about 5.1 million and 5.2 million respectively. The next line shows unidentified fiscal stabilization measures as a first interim of approximately 6 million in '22, '23, and 18 million in '23, '24. Going forward to the components of the ending fund balance from the first interim, you'll see that we only show fiscal solvency if we are able to make all of those identified and unidentified fiscal stabilization measures work. At first interim, we did self-certify as positive, the county, or excuse me, as qualified. The county did agree with us. There was a letter that was on one of the January board meetings, I believe the second one, with a review of the first interim report from the County Office of Education. With that, we, and as I mentioned, we did have to, or we do have to have a board-approved fiscal stabilization plan for inclusion with the submission of our second term report. And that's really where the Budget Advisory Committee comes into this process. We have been in this position for several years now, where we're going in and out of positive certification based on a number of factors, including funding or lack of funding, bargaining negotiations, costs that weren't, that we didn't know we would experience during that time period. And then, of course, over the last couple of years, we've had infusion of both federal and state monies to help in a variety of ways with response to the COVID-19 pandemic from an organizational perspective. But on an annual basis, it feels like, you know, the Budget Advisory Committee is convened really to go through our budgets and then also help us develop the fiscal stabilization plan along with input from a variety of other sources that is ultimately brought to the board for consideration of approval. You'll see during the 2122 You'll see during the 2122 school year, the budget advisory committee, advisory committee. Met eight times starting in September. Up until last Thursday, when they. Made their recommendations to present to the superintendent. Here is a list of our members. I think it's important to note. The, the majority of these members, if not all of them. Have been in this committee for a number of years and, you know, I think goes. Without saying how important that is for continuity and. I'll say ease of discussion, not always ease of topic of discussion. But to have that familiarity is certainly appreciated and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the committee. I know a couple of them maybe on this Zoom meeting still. The majority are not. But without them, this process would not move forward as it has. So a big thank you to this committee. When we talk about the fiscal stabilization plan process, this is, this too is a familiar slide. The BAC makes recommendations to the superintendent. The superintendent can then agree with that recommendation. Not agree with that recommendation. Change the recommendation or add a new recommendation. And that those recommendations from the superintendent are presented to the board of education, which is happening tonight. And then the board will act on either all, some, none, or modifications to the recommendations that were brought forward to the board. Once again, this will be included in the second interim report. So I think this may be the most important slide. Of the presentation and in really what it was, what this focuses on is what we tried to do with the fiscal stabilization plan this year. In light of what we've gone through with the COVID-19 pandemic. With the, I'm not going to say extra funds, but the funds that came in that were mainly unanticipated. Pre-COVID for sure. And then the monies that we did receive. Was really to use that money to address the need from COVID pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic. Also taking advantage of those dollars to demonstrate fiscal solvency in our current into out years. Knowing that this plan is being created with uncertain future funding. We'll go over a couple of those items when we get down into the plan. Also looking at ways to maximize our existing fiscal resources. And the use of one-time funds really to retain personnel. Minimize the creation of combo classes. And continue programs and services that support students. In our last item, we heard about a lot of programs. Or a lot of line items that are, you know. What the LCAP was designed for to directly impact students. That are in the most need. And by utilizing some of these funds to offset some of those funds as we have in the fiscal stabilization plan. Were able to continue programs and services that we may not otherwise be able to. In the position we're in, in terms of declining enrollment and other factors. So we wanted to take the opportunity to use these funds. One, I think it's a shared. Overall shared philosophy, right, is we want to minimize combo classes. Throughout our district, we're not saying that there will not be a single combo class. But we certainly were trying to avoid going from, you know, potentially zero to one to two on a campus. To six or seven. Based on where we're at with current enrollment, projected enrollment. And the amount of staff that we have. We also know that there's a real need for additional bodies on school sites. We know that there are still programs and services that need to be rendered for our students. We also know as a county, as a school district, the county, a state. And the United States, we're having a shortage of teachers. Right? So trying to hire or rehire teachers if needed. Not only is it competitive for a number of reasons, there's just not the quantity of teachers that there once were. So we took that into account too, as we. Brought items forward for consideration with the budget advisory committee. And through internal discussions as well. So this is a very high level summary of the entire plan. And I will note on here, there is a date error, it should be 2021-22 on the second column. Showing. The combination of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions of approximately 5.3 million. And then moving out through 22, 23 and 23, 24. Either revenue enhancements or expenditure reductions. Totally approximately $48.8 million anticipated at this point. When we go through here. Joel or myself will be happy to answer any specific questions. I'm not going to go through each line item. And read it verbatim, but there are a couple that I did want to point out. In terms of revenue enhancements and it's really coming to a 8, a 9. And a 7. A 7. Was the original LAO's recommendation to. Legislature of what they put out as a 5.35 COLA when the governor's budget proposal came. Forward in January, it was 5.33. That was a number that we did use. In the first interim report that we have to adjust down just a tad. But still a good number. For this year at that point in time. Just at the beginning of February, tying into a 9. The LAO revised its projected COLA from 5.33 to 6.17. We went through or talked brief about this, I believe, the governor's budget about the impact of the 5.33. You can see through item A9, but right now we are assuming a 5.75 COLA. For 22, 23. Yeah, 22, 23. But still have high hopes and some seemingly. Non-sightable but credible information that. The COLA at Mary Vision is expected to be at 6.0 or greater. So if that happens or when that happens, you know, we'll be able to increase our revenue. To offset some other items that may be able, may not be able to happen or not happen in the way that we thought that they would. We also got very good news with A11. The allocation of the expanded learning opportunities program, the actual projected allocations to. Santa Rosa City Schools. And at the time of those allocation releases, it is. Ongoing monies to our budget of approximately 4.9 million. At least over the 22, 23 and 23, 24 school year. Going into the remainder of the fiscal stabilization plan and, and just so everyone tracks. This is what the plan looks like. So we're getting down into the Bs and Ds now of the plan. And these are really where we're looking at expenditure reductions. And you can see that on a number of these, we did move. Some and or all depending on the action item. Into COVID relief funds for the services that these individuals are performing. Oftentimes that will offset. LCAP expenditures, right, that can be used for other expenditures in our. Organization. There's very few elimination of positions, for example, B2 is an elimination of a math coordinator. That was never filled, right? But there's still going to be math resources. And the use. Of other personnel to address needs of math. But rather than trying to fill this position right now, we're going to use other resources. And save that money from our projected expenditures for this position. Continuing on, when we look at other positions such as TOSSAs. Moving the totality of district-funded TOSSAs into COVID funds to continue those resources at our school sites. And to help with the implementation of programs and services. D2 is an elimination of a COSA. Counselor on special assignment. And you can see that it's currently 0.2 filled and 0.8 vacant. So we will realize the whole salary because the entire salary was budgeted for that position this year. But it's only filled at 0.2. Another one that we talked about at first interim as an assumption. And continuing to carry that forward with. I'll say the sort of final version of the fiscal stabilization plan at this point. Is moving school-based therapists into our SR3 funds as well, freeing that money up for other uses. Going into other expenditure reductions. Let's just say the copier leasing is very optimistic, right? And luckily it's only $100,000 of this plan. We'll report on that, the, how that goes over the course of the, the next year. The next line, F2. Reduced positions in line with and due to attrition, specifically retirement and resignation. The number is, it doesn't show on here, but on the fiscal stabilization plan. Down here on. Down here, we are showing a reduction of 50 FTE. In the 23, 24 school year. You may recall that previously that was on the 22, 23 school year. And if you recall the year before that, there was a very similar number. On the 21, 22 school year. This goes back to what I said about that. To me, one of the most important slides earlier. Is we're really trying to do our best to retain personnel. There may be decisions down the road where. Perhaps a position or several positions may not be filled due to one lack of candidates. Or lack of need at that point, but our goal is to really maximize. Our, our employees, our, our peoples that are providing services to our students. And so we'll evaluate this. Along with, as we do at the beginning of every school year, when we actually see enrollment. I will also mention that, you know, enrollment projections are always tricky. And next year is, is no different with. And maybe more so with some of the uncertainty going into. The remainder of the school year and the start of next school year. Depending on, on how everything happens as we are starting the endemic, so to speak. So we want to keep that there as a placeholder at this point. Because we do know that with declining enrollment. We do have excess staff in some areas. But right now we want to try and maximize those positions to provide the most services possible with the monies that we do have. There's a couple of other items on here. Of moving some other expenditures that then can be offset to use for other programs and services. Through the, the last couple of these. As we go through this. The second interim report, as I have mentioned. Will be presented at March 9. At this point in time, we do expect to certify as positive. There'll be, you know, a lot of work between now and a week from Friday. Making sure that what we're putting in there is true and accurate based on what happens with our fiscal stabilization plan. In order to maximize those resources. The most years, this year no exception, the Mary Vision is much anticipated. Especially with. A better COLA, if you will. Looking at that, we're still looking for stirs and purrs relief from the governor as well. I can say that the revenue projections. As of last week, going forward are between 10 and 20 billion more. Than what the governor used for his January budget proposal. So there is seemingly a lot of opportunity. To help not just Santa Rosa City Schools, but all school districts. With some of these increasing costs that we have absolutely zero control over. That are putting additional strain on our budget, especially our general, general fund 01 budget. So with that.
A moment, Rick, I see trustee Dela Cruz's hand is raised.
I was just jumping in early to say thank you. This is amazing. Information and okay, I'll ask a question. Rick, did you like me jump up and down and yell at NPR when you heard about the budget surplus? Spend it on education, please.
Yeah. Yes, certainly Director Dela Cruz and, you know, very hopeful that, like I was saying, that some of this money comes to help us offset some of these costs that we have no control over. And hopefully, you know, other, other markers continue to. Lay flat or continue to grow. Especially over the course of the next six months or so until full budget adoption and. Full omnibus trailer bill passage as we prepare for the 22, 23. School year. So with that, next steps, second interim report, we'll continue with some budget advisory committee meetings. Working on some other information to bring forward. May revision in May. Seems obvious to me. And then the third interim is on here. If necessary, right now, we are not anticipating a third interim. We are anticipating a positive certification. Second interim. And then June comes with it, the public hearings for both the LCAP. And the budget adoption rounding out. The school year and this fiscal year in preparation for. You know, 45-day budget revision, et cetera, at the start of the 23, 22, 23 school year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or Director Dantos as well.
All right, bringing it back to the board, trustee Dela Cruz.
Yeah, I now I now I actually do have a question. Sorry, I just didn't want to interrupt your flow, Rick. You were so in it. So I think I really just super appreciated the ways in which you really broke out like these decisions to pull things out of our budget and into SRR. And I wonder if there was like a kind of a specific matrix that you use that might also help us to. Think about how to continue to use that same. You know, set of criteria to, to make those distinctions as we're moving from one bucket to another. I just, it was so clear. I was really grateful for that presentation.
Yeah, I, I would say Director Dela Cruz and to everyone. You know, really what we looked at was. Programs and services that could potentially be in jeopardy, right? Because of declining enrollment, because of lack of funding. And really looked at ways that we could. Enhance the school site or the classroom focusing on students, right? And that was really the drive behind. A lot of these measures. Looking at how it fit into some of the strings, if you will, of some of the funding. To make sure that it was allowable expenditures that was taken into consideration. And then, once again, I'll say this because, and I truly mean this, it was to maximize personnel. For, for next school year. The future is uncertain, right? We know that COVID funds are not going to be there forever. We know that the. State budget won't be quite what it is today. We don't know when that'll happen, right? It's been supposed, it's supposed to happen for the last 10 years. But there will be changes, right? We are still seeing not only declining enrollment in Santa Rosa City Schools. Our feeder districts are experiencing declining enrollment. Sonoma County as a whole. Is experiencing declining enrollment. So there are going to have to be some decisions. That we make as an organization. With the board, right, in the future, but right now, the last thing that, and I think I can. Say this for all of cabinet and administration is we're trying to create the least disruptions as possible. So students return to taking your poem into account, Director De La Cruz. To some type of normal next year that's, you know, it won't be exactly like it was. I'm not saying that. But something that's not where we're at today or or throughout the course of this year and last year.
I guess I'll I'll just ask a much more pointed question, right? So like ARPA, the legislation as a whole is very clear in recognizing that there's been disproportionate impacts of the pandemic on communities of color, on poor people, on essential workers. And so, you know, ARPA as a whole kind of directs us to essentially have an equity focus in our investments, in our in the ways in which we're using our funds. And so I'm just wondering, like, does S R have, you know, because I know it's part of the overall bus legislation. You know, is there is there a similar focus by the district? To recognize and I I I hear the kind of programs that are at risk, but I'm wondering also how we include. The kids that can be, you know, experiencing higher levels of risk due to the underlying vulnerabilities that COVID really highlighted in their families and the kind of work that they do in the neighborhoods that they live in. And so, you know, how are we essentially using that equity criteria to make determinations when when the going gets hard, right, around? Around not only where we're going to focus us or funds, but also kind of make decisions about. What gets moved between those buckets?
Yeah, yeah, great, great question. And I think it comes back to, you know, a primary focus of this, you know. Is our elementary schools, right? That's where a lot of this money is being diverted to in order to keep personnel on those campuses. I think too. Or as well, right, when we looked at what we heard with the LCAP, right, and some of those services, right, that will be offset or augmented. Are are really designed for that work as well, right? And those are continuing discussions that we have to have. To really close the loop on that, right? So. You know, one thing that that is happening in our schools right now. Just in terms of enrollment, right, our middle schools and high schools. Are for argument's sake, pretty flat, right? Even projecting up a few students in some cases, our elementaries are not. Right? And so really putting that focus towards providing those services, right, so that we can. Get to more students at those school sites and create a different experience, I think, is. One of the main drivers of this and then tying that back into some of the LCAP actions that still need to be accomplished is is where. The answer to your question comes from.
Well, you know, along the, oh, I'm sorry.
I I was just saying, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
I I was just going to continue and I'll and I'll move on to you, trustee Flores, but it's sort of along the same lines. It was one area that I had. It sort of flagged for maybe a little bit more clarification because we're talking about the use of one-time funds. That I had flagged was was the minimize creation of combo classes. And I know we've heard from, you know, from classroom staff. And from families a desire to address this, and I'm just wondering about, again, one-time funds and the sustainability. I love that we're taking this approach. This is great. We know that it's needed. How can we continue that? You know, how, again, it's like use, use what we can, use what resources we we can, and let's hope. You know, I I'm not, and I really not expecting an answer from this question. It's just, it's. I I appreciate that we're that we're we're using these dollars strategically. And I hope that we continue to do that as they're available, but they're not going to be available forever. I no answer to that, but trustee Flores.
Yeah, I have a similar sort of rhetorical question. But before I say that, Deputy Superintendent Rick, I just want to say thank you, you know. You know, because we were able to offer him our employees a reasonable raise to make San Rosita City Schools, you know, a destination district and. This was questioned by a lot of people, right? And you were able to 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 make it work, right, into a positive certification. So. Kudos. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I know I have thousands of families saying thank you for doing that and making it work. And this is my rhetorical question, right? So right now we have a projected, you know, a reduction of fifty FTEs for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. No, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Yeah, and. Rhetorical. You know, what was was sort of, you know, preparations are we doing to for that eventuality, right? Because that is the truth of the matter. That in order for us to offer these sort of races. We have to make some drastic changes. So I just want to make sure that this is a rhetorical question. What sort of things are we doing right now to make sure that we're ready for that? Event. So, thank you.
I I'm happy to jump in, Rick. Here, can you hear me?
Yeah, it it's a rhetorical question, Anna, but go ahead, go ahead and answer if you want.
Okay, well, I think that one of the things that was addressed in the report is looking at natural attrition. Of some of the positions, because, you know, it doesn't feel good when we have to let people go, right? It's something that we are committed to demonstrating how much we value. Our current team members and the reality is if we continue in a downward direction of student enrollment. The less students that we have, the less positions we're going to need. And so, you know, just in that sense. You know, we're we are definitely looking for some of those natural opportunities naturally each year. We also experience certain positions. Naturally, each year we experience retirements. I think where we have to be very discerning is when some of those positions are positions that we actually do need to fill. Some of our harder subject areas that we definitely. Take a take a more. Sorry, I don't even know what I'm trying to say here, but basically positions that we know have been harder to fill in the past. We try and make sure that if those are positions like math, for example, is a position that we do tend to want to fill right away. Because we don't seem to have a shortage of those per se, especially with specialized credentials. That at the high school level or the secondary level, for example, so. I don't know if that's helpful, but that is certainly one layer in how we look at that future. And Rick probably would have been more articulate than me.
I guess superintendent, yeah.
Okay, other board members, this is an action item. We're seeking approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal stabilization plan. Do we have other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, can we open it up for public comment if there are members wishing to speak to this item?
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E seven. Please raise your hands at this time. John Smith would like to comment. John, are you there?
Sorry, I had to unmute there. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Edson for the presentation. Thank you, everyone, for staying so late. Just as an outside observer, just kind of want to make this comment. To me, what this looks like is that. Generous compensation package was given to staff. Which was would have resulted in layoffs and we've kind of. Use COVID funding to paper that over. I'm not totally sure that that was the appropriate use of those funds. Maybe it was, maybe it wasn't. I just feel like there should be more transparency around that. That's it. Thank you.
Next is Sheila Walker.
Hi, yeah, my I have a similar observation as the prior speaker. My understanding of S R funds, we are supposed to have community feedback on how the S R funds are to be used. And my impression, I know there's some wiggle room for all the different COVID funds that the district received. But I have yet to see and I haven't heard from any parents in other schools. Where there's extra tutoring or extra after-school or additional reading opportunities for the kids. So it's a little shocking to see that we're moving millions of dollars. Over from S R funds to cover. The general budget. And if I I my memories serves me correctly, we approved a fifteen percent CBA. And then we also approved or the district did eleven percent for administration. So it looks like we're using these COVID funds, which in my opinion, as a parent. Should be used to help our children with additional services, and I've yet to see any additional services. And I don't know how that is the district is furthering equity for anyone by transferring these funds just to cover budget gaps.
Thank you, Ms. Walker and President Sheffield. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Okay, we're bringing it back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion. For approval of the fiscal stabilization plan.
I'd like to move to approve the fiscal stabilization plan as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee De La Cruz, seconded by trustee Medina. We have trustee Flores's hand raised.
I know we're not supposed to respond to 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 what the public says, but you know, it it you know, during COVID has COVID has been very, very difficult for everyone involved, right, and. Districts have suffered, keeping and retaining teachers, right? And making sure that we we have a competitive wages to make sure that our students are educated. It's very, very important for for this board. And I just have to say that our our staff has done a phenomenal job representing multiple times how as their fundings has been fun time being used to make sure that, you know. The social emotional will be in the first user. It's it's been met and it's it's an ongoing process, right? But I just, I just, I just couldn't stay quiet. Our district has, you know, our staff has, you know, a great job of making sure that this is. This is done. So I just wanted to say that. And if we didn't offer that rate, we would have lost, you know, maybe, you know. Dozens and dozens of teachers and educators and then our students would have suffered. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores. All right, we have motion moved by trustee De La Cruz, seconded by trustee Medina. We're ready for a vote. Dean, I believe we're ready.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Fang.
I.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, the motion passes. Thank you again, Rick. Great presentation. Thank you again so much. And 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 we are going to, I'm looking at the time, we're going to try to wrap up things very quickly. I see trustee Medina's hand raised.
I'd like to move to approve consent items F two through seven.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Medina, seconded by trustee Flores for consent items two through seven. Ready for a vote?
Director.
Wait, correction, I don't know if we need to include F one for Director McCormick's. Absence, so I don't know if we need to modify that. I don't know if it's an excuse reason or not.
Yes, she had, she and and gave us prior information. She has a family situation she's dealing with tonight.
Then I would like to amend my motion to include items F one through F seven. Recognizing Director McCormick's absence as.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Medina adjusted the motion for agenda items one through seven.
And now I will second that then.
Director Medina.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Fang.
I. President Sheffield.
I. Motion passes. Thank you. We're moving on to our G items approval of minutes. G one, seeking approval of minutes. Of the special board meeting held on February second, twenty-twenty-two.
I move approval of the minutes of the special board meeting held on February second, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, moved by trustee Fang, seconded by trustee De La Cruz. We are seeking a vote.
Director Fang.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
Same.
President Sheffield.
I. Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item G two, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on February ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on February ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by trustee Fang, seconded by trustee De La Cruz, approval of our. Minutes of the board meeting held on February ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Director Fang.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
President Sheffield.
I. Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item H, request for any information, board members, any requests for information, trustee Medina.
I just wanted to reiterate the earlier request around. The schedule of of arts events for the future for both us and the public.
Very good. Thank you. Other board members?
I had one.
Let's give you the clues.
I really appreciated the additional information around the work that's currently being done at LC and CCLA around the kind of dual language. Possibilities. I would love to see that expanded to address kind of like how we're going to weave in additional languages into that work. So including French and any other possibilities of like how how World House actually fleshed out to be more than just Spanish English.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. All right, seeing no more requests, moving on. The agenda item I items are listed in the agenda packet. Encourage the public to take a look at these items. Again, and always refer to these items as well. There's a lot of good information here. And before we adjourn tonight, superintendent Trunell, any last minute comments or announcements?
Thank you so much. Really appreciate tonight and those that are still with us this evening. And I hope that everyone has a very restful evening. As we get through this week and get prepared for a full week next week after having been spoiled for two weeks with a four-day week. So. Just getting geared up for that and super appreciate everybody.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and stay safe, stay healthy and needing adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good, everybody.